Turn that on. I know, I know. You're gonna have to tell us 65 times. Just leave them on. Alright, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Do the pledge.
I just wanted to start our meeting with a moment of silence because once again in America, we have had a school shooting where two students and two teachers lost their lives. And I think at this point, I mean, in my opinion, we've lost our way. There are many factors. And as much as it makes me sad, I'm just really angry that this is the America our kids are growing up in and that I have to be at home reading that CNN headline while my daughter's sitting in class praying that these kids' lives will be okay. So, we can just take a moment.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We have a new something that we're gonna try. We did some great work over the summer. It was really nice to meet and do some workshopping with some MASC assistants and one of the things that came out of that around our discussions about trying to make our meetings more efficient and kind of get into the discussion stuff that we want to talk about at our meetings, and that is to use a consent agenda. And so that's what you see in the agenda that was posted today or on Friday. And just in general, I think, I did some research on consent agendas, so I was crystal clear about how to manage them and move them. So I wanted to share a little bit of that. And I think one of my biggest questions was around, do you have to pull something off in order to just ask a question? And the answer is no. With the consent agenda items, if there's just a clarifying question that can be asked, we don't do discussion or deliberation around an item. So, at the beginning of this, what I will ask is that if there's anything in particular that someone either is in opposition to, i.e. does not feel comfortable approving, or would like to have a lengthier discussion around that is currently sitting on the consent agenda, all a member has to do is speak up and say, "I'd like to pull this out." We do that immediately. You don't have to provide justification or anything, and it just falls into the regular agenda at that time. So, I think I want to give everybody that opportunity. The other caveat there is that the most important part of a consent agenda is that every single member per our protocols, which we'll talk about later, has reviewed everything that's on here because when you approve this, it's not a vote, it's simply an approval of the items that are listed here, and you're consenting to them as they are. So it's our responsibility as members to make sure that we've reviewed the content of the consent agenda to make sure any questions are asked in the meeting or it's pulled out if you have further discussion. So, does that, is that clear? Does anything on here seem like something you want to do anything more than ask a question about or that you don't feel comfortable moving forward with? Just as a consent. So, I'm gonna read the consent items aloud, and then I will ask for a motion essentially to adopt the consent agenda as a whole. And again, it's essentially, in the absence of objection, we just move forward. It's not a vote situation, as I understand it. I would welcome any insight that anyone has otherwise.
I'm sorry, I have something. So, I don't know if this is applicable to Gerard and I, but if I wanted to add, like after my report, if I want to have a conversation, is this the time to ask? Or does it have to be on the agenda for me to ask if there can be further?
Do you want further discussion, Chase, around something that's on the consent agenda list?
No, I'm asking, can I add something? Or can I not do that?
That's a good question. You can make a motion to add something to the agenda, assuming there are no objections. I can imagine.
I think you can still give, you're still going to do your student report.
Yeah, so can I just tag it on to that?
Yep. I think if it's something that requires discussion, we probably want to make sure you make a motion essentially to add something to the agenda right now. And barring some crazy situation, I can't imagine why we would be opposed to that.
So can I make a motion then?
Let's do the consent agenda and get that approved, and then we'll get into updates. Good question. This is a rookie year still for me, Chase, so slow, baby steps. Okay, so we have the approval of meeting minutes for 6:18, 24, 6:27, 24, 7:29, 24, and 8:15, 24. The request to surplus damaged textbooks, which was in the memo from Dr. Wilcox in the packet. The request to surplus facilities items, also in a memo from Mrs. Freely. Request to surplus district vehicle, memo from Mrs. Freely. A request to approve accounts payable warrants, FY24. So, we've all seen these already. This is simply an approval of those, 1, 52, 53, 54. And then the new ones for FY25, 3, 5, 7, and 9. An overnight trip request to Kentucky, which was described in the memo from Dr. Wilcox. And the FY25 Title I, II, and IV update also outlined in the memo from Dr. Wilcox. So, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the consent agenda as a whole.
Yep.
Great. Depending on since any objections, we're good. That was exciting.
My only other question was, I know Chase is going to Kentucky, the other student, what grade is the other student?
She's also a senior.
Okay. I recognized her name, but I wasn't sure what year she was. Thank you.
Okay, so moving to reports, and Chase, then please do, then we can have that discussion.
Hi, good evening. Welcome to the 2024-2025 school year. I just wanted to introduce our new student representative, Gerard Vasquez Baez, who is a grade 10 student. Gerard has been on the superintendent's student advisory council since eighth grade?
Seventh.
Seventh grade. And he has been an active participant. He's been on the equity audit committee, and he participated in the principal search last school year. So, we think he'll be a nice addition to our student representatives, and he's going to be looking to chase for some guidance as we start the school year. Briefly, I just wanted to share, I believe I informed the school committee over the summer, but I wanted to share publicly that the MSBA, so the Massachusetts School Building Authority, has contacted Duxbury to tell us that they are advancing us to a senior study visit, which just means that they're coming to our school with a team. And during that visit, they will meet with all of us to talk about some of our concerns about Alden School as a facility, our goals for Alden School, what we would like to see, the potential that this building would have for a grade three to five school that we would expect our students to be able to access. And then they'll be doing a tour with a smaller group of people. So the tour will likely be with custodian and facilities where they would be able to show electrical panels, boilers, and some of the building systems, as well as any of the troublesome areas that we've had with any leaks or roof issues.
Turn that on. I know, I know. You're gonna tell us sixty-five times. Just leave them on. Alright, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Do the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. The first public comment. Doesn't appear there is anyone. So Kelly?
I just wanted to start our meeting with a moment of silence because, once again, in America, we have had a school shooting where two students and two teachers lost their lives. And I think at this point, I mean, in my opinion, we've lost our way. There are many factors. And as much as it makes me sad, I'm just really angry that this is the America our kids are growing up in and that I have to be at home reading that CNN headline while my daughter's sitting in class praying that these kids' lives will be okay. So we can just take a moment.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We have a new something that we're gonna try. We did some great work over the summer. It was really nice to meet and do some workshopping with some MASC assistants. And one of the things that came out of that around our discussions about trying to make our meetings more efficient and kind of get into the discussion stuff that we want to talk about at our meetings, and that is to use a consent agenda. And so that's what you see in the agenda that was posted today or on Friday. And just in general, I think, I did some research on consent agendas, so I was crystal clear about how to manage them and move them. So I wanted to share a little bit of that. And I think one of my biggest questions was around, do you have to pull something off in order to just ask a question? And the answer is no. With the consent agenda items, if there's just a clarifying question that can be asked, we don't do discussion or deliberation around an item. So at the beginning of this, what I will ask is that if there's anything in particular that someone either is in opposition to, i.e. does not feel comfortable approving, or would like to have a lengthier discussion around that is currently sitting on the consent agenda, all a member has to do is speak up and say, I'd like to pull this out. We do that immediately. You don't have to provide justification or anything. And it just falls into the regular agenda at that time. So I think I want to give everybody that opportunity. The other caveat there is that the most important part of a consent agenda is that every single member per our protocols, which we'll talk about later, has reviewed everything that's on here because when you approve this, it's not a vote, it's simply an approval of the items that are listed here, and you're consenting to them as they are. So it's our responsibility as members to make sure that we've reviewed the content of the consent agenda to make sure any questions are asked in the meeting or it's pulled out if you have further discussion. So does that, is that clear?
Yes.
Does anything on here seem like something you want to do anything more than ask a question about or that you don't feel comfortable moving forward with? Just as a consent. Everybody good? Okay. So I'm gonna read the consent items aloud, and then I will ask for a motion essentially to adopt the consent agenda as a whole. And again, it's essentially, in the absence of objection, we just move forward. It's not a vote situation, as I understand it. I would welcome any insight that anyone has otherwise.
I'm sorry, I have something.
You do?
So I don't know if this is applicable to Gerard and I, but if I wanted to add, like after my report, if I want to have like a conversation, is this the time to ask? Or does it have to be on the agenda for me to ask if there can be further?
Do you want further discussion, Chase, around something that's on the consent agenda list?
No, I'm asking, can I add something? Or can I not do that?
That's a good question.
Later on, you mean?
You can make a motion to add something to the agenda.
Okay.
And assuming there are no objections, I can imagine.
Well, I think you can still give, you're still going to do your student report.
Yeah, so can I just tag it on to that?
Yep. I think if it's something that requires discussion, we probably want to make sure you make a motion essentially to add something to the agenda right now.
Okay.
And barring some crazy situation, I can't imagine why we would be opposed to that.
So can I make a motion then?
You, let's do the consent agenda and get that approved, and then we'll get into updates. Good question. This is a rookie year still for me, Chase, so slow, baby steps. Okay, so we have the approval of meeting minutes for six eighteen twenty-four, six twenty-seven twenty-four, seven twenty-nine twenty-four, and eight fifteen twenty-four. The request to surplus damaged textbooks, which was in the memo from Dr. Wilcox in the packet. The request to surplus facilities items, also in a memo from Mrs. Freely. Request to surplus district vehicle, memo from Mrs. Freely. A request to approve accounts payable warrants, FY twenty-four. So we've all seen these already. This is simply an approval of those fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four. And then the new ones for FY twenty-five, three, five, seven, and nine. An overnight trip request to Kentucky, which was described in the memo from Dr. Wilcox. And the FY twenty-five Title One, Two, and Four update, also outlined in the memo from Dr. Wilcox. So I'd like to make a motion to adopt the consent agenda as a whole. Yep.
Second.
Great. Depending on since any objections, we're good.
Good.
That was exciting.
My only other question was, I know Chase is going to Kentucky. The other student, what grade is the other student?
She's also a senior. It's Grace Hanfield.
Okay. I recognized her name, but I wasn't sure what year she was. Thank you.
Okay, so moving to reports, and Chase, then please do, then we can have that discussion.
Hi, good evening. Welcome to the 2024-2025 school year. I just wanted to introduce our new student representative, Gerard Vasquez Baez, who is a grade ten student. Gerard has been on the superintendent's student advisory council since eighth grade?
Seventh.
Seventh grade. And he has been an active participant. He's been on the Equity Audit Committee, and he participated in the principal search last school year. So we think he'll be a nice addition to our student representatives, and he's going to be looking to chase for some guidance as we start the school year. Briefly, I just wanted to share, I believe I informed the school committee over the summer, but I wanted to share publicly that the MSBA, so the Massachusetts School Building Authority, has contacted Duxbury to tell us that they are advancing us to a senior study visit, which just means that they're coming to our school with a team. And during that visit, they will meet with all of us to talk about some of our concerns about Alden School as a facility, our goals for Alden School, what we would like to see, the potential that this building would have for a grade three to five school, that we would expect our students to be able to access. And then they'll be doing a tour with a smaller group of people. So the tour will likely be with custodian and facilities where they would be able to show electrical panels, boilers, and some of the building systems, as well as any of the troublesome areas that we've had with any leaks or roof issues, or the entrance to the school that we've talked about for safety and security. And so they'll be visiting us on Thursday, September twelfth, which is a week from tomorrow. And I can report back at our next meeting how that visit went. But Laurel will be in attendance at that meeting, and also Rainey Reed from the town, as well as a small group of us. And then I am going to defer the rest of my comments to Tony Keaty because I wanted him to provide a personnel update for you with the flurry of summer hiring. I think it's really important for you to hear how many ins and outs we have, and the HR department has been working extremely hard throughout the summer to get everybody up and running in the building staffed. So turn it over to Tony.
Thank you, Dr. Klingman. So the hiring process for our current school year started last spring. So we start with our job postings sort of into March, April, and we continue that process all the way through till now. So the openings happen, we post. Each of the building principals responsible for reviewing the candidates, selecting those candidates they wish to bring in for interviews, and they recommend the chosen candidate up to central office for final approval from Dr. Klingman. And then we also keep track of all of our other personal transactions. So increase in FTEs, decrease in FTEs, transfers, some people going from long-term sub or interim to permanent positions. So for this current school year, we had about seventy-seven personnel transactions that we keep track of. That does not include separations. So people who retired or left the district, we keep those in a separate spreadsheet. We had seventy-seven what I consider to be like personnel changes or additions. Of that seventy-seven, we had thirty-nine new staff. They were new to Duxbury Public Schools. Of that, twelve were teachers. Those were, of those twelve, three were retirement replacements. Eight of them were replacements for teachers who left the district for whatever reason. Then we had one brand-new classroom teacher. We also had added thirteen instructional assistants, and those were a variety of replacements and additions. We also replaced an administrative assistant in the Special Education Department due to retirement. We had a custodian resign, so we replaced a new custodian at Alden School. We also hired a theater and technical director for the PAC. We hired a few lunch and recess assistants, bus monitors, as well as some staff for the Magic Dragon and extended day staff. All of those hires go through us. We also had ten administrator hires. Of those ten, some of them were sort of internal moves. So for example, Scott Herman going from assistant principal to permanent principal. Then we put Lou Alberti as the permanent assistant principal. So those are all part of that hiring process. We also hired eight long-term substitute teachers, and those assignments vary in length, from three weeks to a full year. And those are typically for leaves of absence, either medical or parental leave. And so just so you're aware, we consider a long-term substitute position, and it's gonna be in the same position for fifteen school days or longer. And a long-term substitute takes on the full responsibility for planning and implementing the lesson, which is different than the daily sub who comes in just to kind of fill in as needed. Currently, all of our permanent teaching positions have been filled. So we are lucky to start the year pretty much fully staffed. We have a few openings remaining. We have one instructional assistant, an English Language Arts tutor, a math tutor, one building-based substitute teacher, and we are still looking to fill, will be filling, four more long-term substitute positions throughout the district. So overall, we figured we had a pretty successful year. Great thanks to our central office team. This really is a team effort. When we onboard a staff person, everybody's central office takes on some part of that responsibility to making sure we get them into the payroll system, Aspen, frontline, all of our systems. And then, once we get them all fully on-boarded, we complete the background check, which includes the criminal history check. Now we do a sexual offender registry check as well, and we do the fingerprint check. And when all of that is completed, then we basically turn them back over to the building principal to determine start date and kind of get them up and rolling from there.
I just want to comment, I read all the newsletters, because I'm a nerd, and I was so impressed. So congratulations to you all for the new hires, the resumes, and just the people that we have that have come to our district. I think our kids are really lucky. So, thank you.
When I read something like there was thousands of openings across the state still as schools started.
There are currently forty-eight hundred openings across the state.
Yeah, some wild number, so.
Not here, thankfully.
Yeah.
So with the seventy-seven, is that consistent with previous years? So it's usually around that money?
Yes. We're pretty much, that's pretty standard for a number of like sort of changes, additions, subtractions, whatever. So we're pretty consistent.
Is that your update? Not that that was not sufficient, sorry. Suggested that I was not. It is. Go ahead.
Good evening. We were fortunate to find out on July twenty-ninth that we received Title One, Title Two A, and Title Four funding. This year, we received seventy-five thousand dollars approximately in Title One funding, and that is a decrease from the previous year, which was eighty-three thousand seven hundred and thirty-one dollars. And it is approximately twenty-eight thousand dollars less, oh, no, I'm sorry, twenty-three thousand dollars less than two thousand and twenty-two. So we are fortunate that we received that funding, and we were able to use the funding to support the Title One math tutors at the elementary level. However, it is a decrease from previous years. I also wanted to share that we are excited to implement our Imagine Math program at the middle school. We will be having a parent evening the first or second week of October. We are working with the, those who will be providing the training, just to secure the date, and we will let families know as soon as we have that date secured. And I also just wanted to share that we are implementing the updated DESI Classroom Teacher Rubric, which has updated language, and that was a project that DESI has been working on for the past three years. And last year was a year that the rubric was piloted. We did not choose to pilot the rubric, but we are implementing it this year. Lastly, at the elementary level, we are piloting two reading programs. So we are piloting CKLA, and we are piloting Intu Reading. Our teachers were trained on both programs this summer. They were, they participated, those teachers who are participating in the pilot participated in a half-day training, and they will be working with representatives from both companies as they implement parts of units this fall. They will be done with the pilot by December, and we will be able to share with you the results of both pilots, and then the preferred option from the teachers who were piloting the program.
Is it three per grade? Three per?
The teachers, it's at least two in a grade.
The teacher rubrics, is that evaluation of the, is that an observation tool for the teachers?
It is. It's an observation tool, but it's also, the rubrics are used for all five components of the evaluation process. So it's really used for the reflection part for the teacher. It's used to create the goals. So when the teacher is thinking about goals, and when they're working with the administrator to talk about the goals, it's used by the evaluator during observations to refer to. And then it's also used in the formative and the summative report writing. So we try to pull directly from the language to ensure that we are connecting what we're seeing in the observations to the rubric language. And so it really is a document that grounds our practice because it's something that we can use to talk about teaching and learning. It can center our teaching and learning, and it is an anchor that also provides common definitions. So a new component of the rubric is that there is an additional piece that has common definitions that we can talk about. So what does culturally linguistic practices, what does that mean, and how are we interpreting that, and what does it look like? So it will be a great tool for us to use to create discussions, to create, to really calibrate our work as we move forward this year.
And is that something you have a copy of, and the teacher does as well, or where does that live?
There are, it's actually public on the DESI website, and so anyone can go on to the DESI website. But we also use Vector for our evaluation system to keep track of the goals and any of the observation feedback. And so there's also a link as well in Vector.
So a teacher's inputting information into that for their goals and, okay.
Yes, yes. But it can also be found on the DESI website under evaluation.
Right. The general, but not the specific person.
Correct. The updated classroom teacher rubric. And we adopted the language directly from DESI. So there weren't, there were no adaptations to the rubric that was provided.
I'll have the rubric. I'll have the rubric to.
So we are taking this year to unpack it. We are focusing on evaluation and observation and calibration as an administrative team. So we'll be working at each of our administrative council meetings to go through different, whether it's a scenario, to calibrate, what would you say during this, if this question came to you? Or we're taking a look at Standard Two A today. And then different members of our administrative team are going to come to the meeting with a learning experience focused on a different part of the evaluation process or the rubric, and we'll unpack it. And we will be doing the same thing with the teachers. So we'll be going throughout the year in different ways, whether it's department meetings, staff meetings, professional development time, to ensure that we are connecting with the rubric language.
Beth, can I, it's, so Imagine Mathematics Program, is that like the publishing as opposed to, was it illustrative?
Illustrative. So it's, yes, it's confusing.
Okay.
It is very confusing.
Because that was what we talked about, and this seems different.
It's illustrative math, but it will come home as Imagine Math. So the product that you might see, or if there's something on the page from something that your student brings home, it may say Imagine Math. But it is illustrative math. It's all the same.
Okay.
It's a great question. It's confusing.
I was hoping we didn't change it. Good. Thank you. Alright, Lisa?
Hi, I'm actually gonna defer my update to.
For twenty-four?
Yes.
Great. We'll talk to you later. Teresa, go for it. There you go.
You told me not to touch it. Okay, hi, everybody.
Hi.
Hello. I want to start chronologically. So extended school year went very well this year. We had about seventy students who participated. I want to thank the families, the kids, and our staff. Everything went pretty smoothly. We really had no major glitches. And the nice thing is I have several staff already committing to work next year. So trying to lock those in really early. I think it's great to keep it all in the one building, so we'll continue to just plan. We have the date set for next year, and keeping it in one place just simplifies so many things. This summer, I met with the CPAC board on August sixth, so we have CPAC meeting dates set for the year. If parents are interested, the website is DuxburyCPAC.org. The first meeting is a parent support meeting on September twenty-third, and they will be holding that at Island Creek Oysters. So check the website to get specific info. I think they start around six o'clock. I'm very grateful to the new positions. So we have Deb Sullivan is our out-of-district team chair. So I'm working with her to transition. I'll be going to meetings with her initially, just to introduce her to families, the staffs at the various schools where we have students placed. She's very experienced as a team chair, has many years from Situate, both doing out-of-district and in-district. So thank you, thank you for that. And Tony mentioned the many other positions. We have our team chairs at Chandler, April Romano. And at Alden, we have Kristen Lambert, both really excellent hires. They've jumped in with both feet and are doing a great job working with our teams. And there's several other teaching positions. We have a special ed position here at Alden, grade five, Lindsay Good. And at the high school, Cam Hoag resigned, so we have hired Laura Woodruff. Again, really great hires, very positive, connecting with people. And our post program, we already have things up and running. The schedule is, it's like we didn't even stop from last year. And we have a number of new instructional assistants. I don't know if we had a record this year, but I think at the new teacher orientation, where they're twelve. So they came to that, had an orientation before the first day, which I think was very helpful to get them their technology, their badges. So when they came in on day one, they'd already, were kind of ready to go. So that was great. I just want to briefly talk about the new IEP form, so people understand what's happening. So last year with Aspen, what they did is they had the new form all set up. They populated information from the old form into the new form. So both forms are living right now in Aspen and will do so throughout this whole year. But we have set the new form as our default. So as we're scheduling IEP meetings, and we've already had some, we're working in the new form. We've noticed that some of the information that was pre-populated, we might have to tweak it a little bit. So teams are ready to go. We're in that new form. So what will happen by the end of this year, we will have fully transitioned all IEPs to the new form. And that includes our out-of-district students as well. So it's been a pretty smooth transition. We'll continue to do some trainings and updates for parents, but they're already starting to see this new form in the IEP meetings that we have. So it's been a pretty seamless transition. And just lastly, the special ed subcommittee, I've sent out dates for people to look at, so we will meet monthly this year. I felt like it was a pretty collaborative process. I'm grateful to Beth for being there last year. But we have some goals that we set of actionable steps we want to take in how to improve processes, procedures, and just continue to work collaboratively. And it's been a pretty smooth start.
I have a question on the IEP.
Yep.
So one of the things that I think has come up from time to time over the years in special education is that, you know, there's sort of mixed reviews on IEP meetings from family standpoint, and sometimes there's sort of inconsistencies around like what the expectations are and what you can get. And I'm wondering if the new IEP process has helped to bridge that gap at all, or is it not made sort of a difference? I know that it's been a long time since it's been updated, so it's a new thing.
Right.
I think one of the, you know, sort of the objectives is it's in the better interest of the students long-term. But I was just curious as to whether it's made the meetings themselves with parents, if it's had any impact, good or bad?
In part, yes. I think the form will make a difference, but it's, DESI's goal was really to ensure that our meanings, our meetings are more meaningful, that we're not just going page by page, checking things off on a, you know, a box or a list. It's about a person. It's about a child. And so the intent, in large part, was to make sure we had increased student voice and parent voice. It's much more specific in terms of what we're asking students of, what do you see as your vision? Where do you want to go? So I do think the form will be helpful. But part two of that is what we do as the people running the IEP meetings. So I do meet monthly with our team chairs and our building coordinators to talk about building consistency across the levels. And we have talked about starting our meetings by talking about student strengths and giving the parents a tangible list, whether it's sticky notes or a digital list of, this is what we recognize your child has as strengths. And that's where we want to start because we use those strengths to leverage the areas of need. And so in terms of how we're running the meetings, we are definitely, will be seeing some differences with that. And I encourage parents to speak up. I mean, we want to hear parents' voices and students' voices because ultimately, it's about a person's life and where we're trying to get them to as they go through our school system and out into the world. So yes, I will be working with CPAC also to continue to get feedback around that. I meet this Friday with our special ed leadership team, and that's one of the specific things we're going to talk about, is how we're opening our meetings, what we're putting on our agendas, and making sure that we're hitting all those things that were intended with this new IEP form.
Sounds great.
Okay. You guys ready? Welcome. We're so glad you're here.
Good evening. So I have Chandler, as well as Alden's reports. Chandler had a wonderful beginning of school last week. Chandler first and second graders started on Wednesday, and preschool and kindergarten students had Welcome Day. On Thursday, all Chandler students were in the building. We had a successful first week of arrival, lunch and recess, lots of learning, and dismissal. Yesterday, Chandler had a school-wide Welcome Back Assembly. As a school community, we read the book, Our School is a Family, which emphasizes the importance of everyone's individual actions leading to the success of the whole community. We will be participating in Start with Hello Week during the week of September sixteenth. Start with Hello teaches students how to reach out to and include those who may be socially isolated, as well as to create a culture of inclusion and connectedness within their school or youth organization. Each year, thousands of schools from across the United States participate in the Start with Hello Week to highlight and spread the message of the power of reaching out and connecting with those around us. There will be classroom lessons and activities that are aligned with the G, Great Friend to All, in our green acronym that all students will be experiencing throughout the week and into the coming month. On Friday, September twentieth- On Friday, September twentieth, we welcome all Chandler students and staff to wear green in celebration of Starting with Hello and in the spirit of being part of the Chandler family. And then Alden had a wonderful kickoff to our school last, school year last week. Open house the evening prior to our first day was well received. Students were able to meet their teachers and find their classroom, along with seeing old friends and meeting new classmates and families. Alden School had grade level assemblies in the pack to review our respect values and share expectations around our school. We heard an inspirational speech about the mindset of a champion and read the book, A Little Spot of Respect. This morning, we held our respect assembly and flag ceremony throughout the school year. We will hold one assembly per month, focus on each of our respect values, celebrating our staff and students together as a school. School pictures, including both individual and class photos, are coming up on Monday, September ninth.
All right. I have DMS and DHS. I wasn't given a Dexter Middle School report, so these are just the first few paragraphs from Ms. Mover's newsletter. Our first week of the 2024-25 school year was a success. Our students returned with energy and enthusiasm, and we can't wait to see all of the growth and achievement they'll have this year. Mrs. Cohen and Mr. Henry held grade level assemblies last week during academic support so that all students had the opportunity to learn about our procedures and expectations for learning and behavior at DMS. We hold these assemblies each term, and you may hear from our students about the fun team competitions we incorporate, as well as the goal setting and reflection we do during these times of connection with each grade level. This week, we were also able to distribute over six hundred laptops to our students, and all students should be up and running with Wi-Fi and accounts at this point. I want to thank all of the teachers and technology staff who ensured that this massive effort occurred with as few hiccups as possible. Additionally, last week, we had a wonderful bridge program with our sixth graders and new students. Our eighth grade bridge leaders were phenomenal and well-prepared for the morning's activities after multiple days of extensive training. I want to thank our PTO for supporting snacks, for supporting snacks for all students, and a thank you. Lunch for our leaders as well. I want to thank Ms. Madden and Ms. Martin, who make sure our bridge program happens each year. And for DHS, Student Council had their annual link orientation for incoming freshmen, consisting of personalized tours and a link day, which familiarized the ninth graders with the school, grade-wide bonding, and Q and A opportunities. The start of school concluded the preseason for many fall sports. Field hockey season has started, and they had a game today against Pembroke. I don't know how they did. The football team has their season opener this Friday against Hanover. We are all looking forward to another great season. The Fall Tournament of Plays audition took place yesterday from three to five p.m. and are currently taking place until seven. I believe it was from five to seven tonight. DHS's extracurricular club fair is taking place September eighteenth. DHS open house is Thursday, September twenty-sixth, from six p.m. to eight, ten p.m. And freshmen have received their new Chromebooks, and the tech department and administration plan to distribute these to the rest of DHS within the days coming. And then, is this when I?
This is when you?
Okay.
So are you, do you, is this just a topic that you would like to raise for the committee as opposed to something that we need to vote on? I just want.
Yeah, it's more like a discussion. I guess it's kind of like a report and then like a discussion.
Great.
So you probably assumed it's pertaining to the cellphone ban. So I just wanted to let you know that it's been pretty well-received for the most part. I think students understand that phones are not conducive to the learning environment and that we're almost thankful that we've instructed our phones, because I feel like I found with my peers and also myself, I've, it's forced me to fully immerse myself in learning, and I'm more engaged, I've been participating more. So I think there are, I know there are numerous positive effects, but I think it's just hard to see what they are, given that we're only five days in. I think with this said, there is some frustration with the senior privilege that seniors had, they got to have their phones in ASP, and then it was taken away from us. Again, I just want to preface that we all understand that we're all on board with the, during class time. I think it was just confusing for us, because we were giving our, we were given a senior privilege, and then it was taken from us with little explanation. So I just, at the risk of sounding combative, I just want to go over the policy, and I'm really looking for more clarity. So it says, Duxbury High School students will be expected to place their cellphones and/or smart devices in a designated container in each classroom, and will be able to access their phones only during lunch and passing time. And then it goes on to say, the state reports that more than half of Massachusetts school districts have a ban to phones during school hours and may have partial bans where phones are put away during class. So I think because there's no clear delineation whether or not ASP is at class time, because nothing's being taught, that's why, that's where the confusion came in, because we thought we had this privilege, because I guess it's not considered a class. But I'm asking you guys, what do you consider a class? And if you don't, if you want the ban to also pertain to seniors during ASP, if we could have a conversation to change that.
So on day one of school, did you have access to your phones in ASP? Because I also thought I saw that in writing somewhere, that for seniors, that was a privilege. And then since day one, that privilege has been removed?
Yeah, so we did, I was under the impression that that was our senior privilege.
Okay.
And I also went into school not knowing that we were not going to have our phones during ASP this week. So I thought it was our senior privilege, and then I showed up yesterday and was told that we no longer had our phones.
And there was no, can you tell me, was there a reason?
I had a meeting, I was not in the room when that happened, but by what my friends have told me, there was little explanation as to why. And I think that's because there was confusion in whether or not ASP was considered at class time or not.
I think the intent, I was surprised to see ASP in, you know, a privilege of seniors at first, so I don't, I haven't had any discussions on it since. I don't know if you guys have either, but I can see where that's confusing.
Yeah.
So I think we probably need to.
Yeah, so I think this is a, and this is something we've been talking about a little bit, or I should say, I have spoken with Danielle about, because I think, I want to be crystal clear that the student, the policy is a school committee policy, and it was essentially developed because I think it was, there was a pretty clear message from the community of parents, students alike, that, and it's happening all over the country, right? We all know that, that this was something that we as a district wanted to take on and draw a line in the sand to say, we feel strongly about this. We need to have a district-wide policy over and above what had previously been in handbooks as kind of at the discretion of the teacher, which didn't seem to be working very well. I think there are major concerns about cheating, that cellphones were facilitating. I think we care about social connection and social emotional well-being. We talk about that all the time as a focus in the buildings, and we know that phones, you know, obviously take away from that. Everything that you've said makes it clear that you understand all of those things. I think from a policy perspective, there was no delineation. ASP is a class period during the school day, and there was no, seniors don't have, seniors get to have their phones during ASP. So I am concerned that maybe there was just a misunderstanding in implementation of the policy from the beginning that now has been retracted and feels like there was a privilege taken away. I, the word privilege makes this a different conversation. So I think the policy is crystal clear, that phones are to be away during class periods. Academic support period is a class period, and I think in, for all the other grades, it's perceived that way. If there is a separate conversation about senior privilege, and that's different than the policy. So the message is that the policy is crystal clear about phones being away during the school day, during class periods, of which ASP is one. A different conversation for another day or discussion about privilege, I think, is something that we can put on a future discussion. I don't think it's something that, you know, we're going to change today. But I would welcome Danielle speaking.
I'm glad you brought it up. It's always good to have a conversation about this. And we had made a decision as a group that we would revisit the cellphone policy to see how things were going after it's been implemented. I know Ms. Cotton-Herman is here tonight, and she wanted to make sure if there was any questions that she could answer, and I think she'd be able to answer what was communicated to students when they returned to school on Tuesday this week, if that's the will of the committee. Or we could certainly put this on a future agenda. But I, I just want to say on record that I was clear with the cellphone policy being throughout the school day and only passing times, and lunch, where the students at the high school only able to access phones. And so I think that was clear from the discussions we had in developing the policy along the way. Looking back, I think we could have added language about ASP and just saying that that is considered to be learning time as well. But in retrospect, I don't think the high school, the high school interpreted that in a different manner, in a way that I don't think we had included in our discussion. So I think with no fault to anyone, it was just a different interpretation that was then corrected. And it was not a privilege to be taken away for students for any reason that they were doing something wrong. But it was just an adjustment to the interpretation of the policy as far as my conversations with the high school administration. But certainly, if you have any, if you wanted to have Ms. Cotton-Herman share what she shared with the seniors on Tuesday, I know she'd be willing to do so.
Well, I think, I mean, Matt and I worked on the, we're on the subcommittee on policy, and we invited in all the principals, and we had a discussion. And I, it was pretty clear to all of us that phones were allowed at lunch and in passing and at no other time. So I guess I'm confused as to how the seniors were granted a privilege that's not in the policy, and now this is where we're at. And so now it seems like you've been given something and it's been taken away, which is unfortunate.
Yeah, I don't think we were ever granted something that was, I think where the confusion is, is that we weren't granted anything in the policy, it's the lack of clarity, and I think that's where the misinterpretation happened. I don't think anyone specifically went and gave us something that we weren't, we didn't have the right to. So I guess my question also is, is there a possibility to have a conversation to change this, or are you dead set in the way you feel? Like, or, and if I worked out this conversation, would it be with you or with the school administration?
I can't speak for the committee, but what I can say is that like when we, as a committee, when we reviewed the policy, the draft policy that we voted on, there was feedback among some school committee members that actually the, the policy wasn't strict enough. So I think we'd be going, fortunately, for students who would want to maybe open the patient, we'd be going in the wrong direction if we were to create some holes, like for ASP. That's just my interpretation of what we talked about when we reviewed the policy.
Well, because then you're getting into, well, is ASP a class or not a class? Like, we worked long and hard to have ASP. So are you supposed to be seeking out teachers and getting help and working with people, or is it a free period? So then that's a whole nother.
Well, that elevates, that's a different discussion.
That elevates it, but as a former, you know, I'm thinking, that's time and learning, right? That's a class. So that's why, as far as everybody who was in the room when we put the policy together, ASP was a class. So, yeah.
I agree. And I think, Chase, I would, I think we are, we've already designed an agenda, like a formal agenda item at the end of October to do kind of a full check-in with all the building staff from all levels to talk about how it's going. And, you know, if you would like to raise this conversation at that time, I think from, and again, I can only speak much like Matt as one member, but there is an attempt here to sort of reset, and to start a reset with a dial-back is not, I, I do not feel that's where we want to be in sending a message to say, this is crystal clear about how we want this to go from the beginning, to allow that to play out and go from there. So I think the formal check-in we have at the end of October in that meeting, you know, that will be the time to kind of discuss how it's going. And if, if, if the question is for administrators to bring to the committee a discussion about any changes that they feel from their professional perspective is warranted, or from feedback from students, that would definitely be the time for that noted, though, frustration.
Yeah, I mean, just the only other thing I would say is that I, I recognize that, you know, the, the confusion at the beginning is not where we want to be. So I can understand if students were feeling, you know, upset about sort of a last-minute change in, in direction, but feel very good, for sure.
Do you, I would invite you, if you want to add anything, or if you were just here to answer questions, that's okay, too.
No, I mean, I didn't even, I was already planning to come, and then I heard that this might come up. Chase let me know that he was going to say something, and I said, okay, I'm going to be there, so if there's any questions. So Chase and I have talked about it, and I fully support that. I do think it was just, you know, it was our intention to fully support it, very supportive of it. I've had great feedback from teachers and students in the classrooms about how engaged they are. I haven't seen in my travels through the building during class time, I haven't caught students out on their phones, I've seen them on the doors and in the classrooms and the caddies, so I think it is going well. And I do think it's probably true, right? Like, that's unfortunate to start and then take. The feeling is, is that it was taken away, right? And so I tried to address that in person with, with each senior ASP, and I do think the students probably felt like there wasn't a lot of explanation, because I did tell them, you didn't do anything wrong. This isn't because of anything, it's because we've really thought about, you know, there have been some students, right? Like, I have heard, even though I haven't seen it, that some students haven't been following those rules, and really in thinking about needing to be consistent with every student in every period, every day, we really feel like we need to just be consistent across the board in every period. And so that's why, right? Like, when it's not the answer of, well, we found you doing this, and so we're taking it away, it doesn't feel like a very good explanation. Instead, it's like, I just kind of said, it's on me, I own it. I'm sorry that I have to do this, but I just wanted to tell each of you. I guess Chase wasn't in the room when I came to your class, but I wanted to tell each of them. I was like, face to face, because I respect you, and I understand that this is hard. And so that was the conversation we had. But really, just from the standpoint of, we really need to be consistent. It is important, and we can, we can do this together, so, yeah.
And teachers were allowing them to have their phones during ASP last week?
Seniors, yeah, because we told them. Yep, yep.
So I think it's October twenty-third. Mark your, is that the meeting? Mark your calendars, Chase. Build your case.
Thank you. Well, you may, I mean, it's day five of school, right? And you and your peers may find in, at day twenty, actually, we don't miss it, and actually we're enjoying, like, getting our work done and/or communicating with each other, which is the intent of this whole policy. But you may not find that, and we're certainly open to hearing your voice, so.
And I have a strange clarifying question from a technology standpoint, because I think, I heard, and this has come up in general among the kids, like, I like to listen to music, and people were using their phones to do that. I don't know that that's the only way you can listen to music. I'm curious if your Chrome, like, do you have music on your Chromebook, or can you access music on the Chromebook that's the school-issued device that you have access to anyway, that you could still do that?
I'm not sure, because I've never tried to do that, but I know in past years, kids have asked to use their phones to listen to like a playlist that they've like curated themselves, because that's a study habit for them. But I've, I don't, personally don't listen to music, but I know that's been an outlet for many kids, but I don't know if they know.
I don't believe we have streaming available for Spotify or Pandora, anything on the school computers. I think it's filtered.
Okay. That, no, that's.
It might have to be that music is your home study habit in that school. You have to just sit in silence.
Or talk to other people.
Spin your pen.
Quietly, talk quietly.
Annoy people.
So noted. I appreciate you raising it. On behalf of your student body. I'm sure there are many. Okay. Oh, me. I don't, I don't have an update. I'm excited that the school year started. I, my own kid is back in the building. There's a relief to knowing where everyone is at any given point during the day, so I'm excited about that. I hope it's been a good start. Sounds like it has, generally. And I think just in terms of school committee business, as I said, I think I'm excited about the things that we're going to talk about tonight that are hopefully going to make this a really great year for the committee and to really get into the work that we want to be doing and serve that role of kind of sharing information with the community that I think has been asked for. So I'm excited about the year. Yes, please. Anyone else?
Kelly, go.
That would be me. I didn't bring a note card. We all received an email, the mask resolutions that they put out every year and they're voted on at the Mass Association of School Committee and Superintendent Meeting in November. But the only one that I kind of wanted to highlight was, there's been a lot of discussion about using MCAS as a graduation requirement. And that is going to actually be a valid question this year on November fifth. And so there's some confusion around, well, we're not going to do MCAS and whatever. MCAS would still be, what's the word?
Administered.
Administered, thank you. But it would no longer be a graduation requirement, so that's the only difference.
If it's voted.
If it's voted in, right. And if it doesn't get through, then mask is still going to put it through as a resolution that they don't think it should be done. So, you know, because they put things through that aren't necessarily law, but how educators feel about.
They support the concept.
Exactly.
Right. Yeah, I had some news a lot last year. Kind of went quiet.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, Lisa. Let's do it.
I'm going to provide a quick update on our FY24 year-end financials. Our FY24 budget, as appropriated by the March 2023 Town Meeting, totaled $41,667,002. In your packet was a financial exhibit titled FY24 Year-End Operating Budget Financial Report, which provided a detailed view of our expenditures and encumbrances by location and major category. As of June 30th, we have expended 99.6% of the regular school operating budget, which is very close to our target of 100%. Notably, our purchases of goods and expense accounts were at 88.56% expended. This reflects some delayed payments for services and unused reserves in operational and supply and service accounts. We have encumbered $697,909 for anticipated goods and services, but had not yet been fully processed, which means that the goods and services were on order, in process. We have not processed those payments yet. Right now, we are in the process of rolling over, finishing the rollover of our year with the town. And for this item specifically, the rollover of purchase orders, there's a little bit of a glitch happening right at the moment, which has caused us to delay payments out to vendors for these invoices. So I'm working with our town accountant and our financial software company to rectify the situation so we can get that resolved.
Are there any, like, interest penalties?
No, and we wouldn't pay them anyway, but no.
Excuse me.
But yeah, so, and we've been in communication with our vendors. Certainly anybody that reaches out, we give them an explanation of what's happening. There are vendors that speak to regularly. Suzanne speaks to people on a weekly basis. So we are definitely in communication with our vendors so they know what's happening.
So just to be clear, the 697-909 is essentially on the books to be paid out on services that were supplied or goods that were ordered within FY24.
Correct. And when we complete the end-of-year report, that dollar amount is considered expended in the operating budget. So the oper, encumbrances for the operating budget or our special funds are treated differently. In the operating budget, it's considered spent. We record it as an expenditure on the end-of-year report. On the grant revolving and special accounts, it's recognized when it actually happens in the year that it actually happens.
Oh, so some of that may be.
So there could be a variance if you're looking at different accounts and you're like, oh, why do we have all this money in capital? Or why do we all have all this money here? That oftentimes what it is, it's just the timing of when things happen in those accounts.
So those would not come out until FY20, they would be in the FY25 books in those situations. Okay, got it.
Which we can talk about when we get to some of the capital items. So when we factor in these encumbrances, our overall expenditure rate for FY24 rises to 97.77%. As I mentioned, we're actively processing the encumbrances as soon as we fix the rollover issue. For prior year encumbrances from FY23 that totaled $1,48,353, we utilized $998,624, or just about 96%, to settle invoices that were received after July 1 of 2023. We liquidated an additional $45,356 in encumbrances that were no longer needed. And the remaining $4,373 will be, are being addressed as part of our year-end closing process of FY24. At the close of FY24, we have an operating budget surplus of $168,147, which represents 0.4% of our total operating budget. As per our practice, these surplus funds will be returned to the town. And after the town closes its books, these funds will be certified as free cash, which then can be used to allocate, for allocation to capital projects and reserve funds. So the district also receives benefits of various state, federal, and local grants, donations, and fee-based programs. As of June 30th, we expended approximately $355,402 of our FY24 awarded grant funds. And I want to be specific on that. We received much more than that in grant funding for the year, but of the awards that were for FY24 only, we expended that. And for clarification as to why that is, we typically operate a number of account, a number of accounts a year in arrears. So our, it's easier for budgeting. You know what you have to work with. The special education IDE grant is a perfect example of that, as is the circuit breaker funding. So that's very helpful. Several June grant deposits have not yet been, or had, had not yet been received as of June 30th and were to be reported in FY25. So that would have been grant funds that were requested at the end of June. And Desi has taken a little longer in processing payments this year over the whole year. So that's okay. The spending period for federal grants extends 12 months beyond the award deadline to support special education, professional development, and curriculum planning for the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education guidelines. So that goes into that year-in-arrears comment. Our donation accounts funded by PTOs, organizations, and private donors had $69,760 received by June 30th. Additionally, we receive in-kind donations that are not reflected in these totals. Unspent fund, donation funds carry forward into the next fiscal year, and they are only used for the purpose in which they are provided, unless they are, um, general funds with, like, unrestricted funds.
Unrestricted.
So they can be used for a specific school if they're granted to that school. The district operates several fee-based programs, including nutrition services, athletics, transportation, prior to this year kindergarten, full-day kindergarten, and community education. Some of these programs are self-sustaining through participant fees. As of June 30th, we collected an estimated $5.15 million in user fees across all revolving accounts. These revolving funds will roll over into FY25 and continue to support these programs. Finally, expenditure activity in our capital account was detailed in Attachment C of the packet. This includes only projects that are appropriated to the school committee and remain open until fully expended. Embedded within the capital list were PEG funds, which are cable monies from fees collected by cable operators from the customers in the community as part of the franchise fee that are paid to Comcast or Verizon. These were funds, from what I've seen, that go back as far as 2016 when this was put into place. And we, two years ago, were able to access the funds for the first time through a special, as part of the Special Town Meeting in October of 2022. And now it's a standing-borne item on the annual town meeting. These funds support educational public access such as Dragon TV or streaming these school committee meetings. That is all that I have. Thank you very much. Do you have any questions?
Is that one of the lowest returned, lowest surpluses in a while?
I think so. Yeah, I mean, since I've been here.
Yeah, that's impressive.
A couple of years, yeah. And, you know, our goal is, while we want to be collaborative, we are given a budget to spend because that is what we say we need. And so we, you know, my goal is always to spend the allocation that we're provided. I don't think we'll have that problem this year.
Yeah, no.
No. Well, and to be clear, the money that's returned, there's. Yeah, in theory, there's an agreement with the town, that there's an understanding that we have plenty of other things that we did not get to maybe fix or purchase or, and there's an acknowledgement that that money should be spent that way.
And they, and the town largely funds capital projects for free.
Right, right.
So in the end, they've been very generous to the schools the last few years that I'm, I've been here in terms of supporting our projects. In terms of the data surrounding some of our projects, which Dr. Klingman's going to speak to, what we've done this year, the capital projects also follow similar structure as all of our other accounts. It's a timing thing. So if you look at the balances and you're questioning why some are there, it is what happened as of June 30th, not what has happened as of August 31st. And so much has transpired from the end and start of the fiscal year till today. And I'm excited for Dr. Klingman to speak to some of these.
You just want to hand over.
I really just want to, yes.
But do you have any other questions?
This is very specific, but Tony mentioned earlier that we do the hiring for Magic Dragon. So, and we run the revenue through us and whatnot. Are they, they're considered a private preschool?
Oh, it's not on.
It's not on.
But it's considered a private preschool? Yes?
It's a complicated explanation, and I'm not always very articulate in providing an explanation. So they do fall under the school department. They are their own entity. They are self-sustaining. So they have to have the revenue to cover their expenses. But they do fall under the school department. Their staff are considered municipal employees. So they receive the same benefits that all Town of Duxbury employees and school department employees receive. So.
And they pay rent.
And they pay rent.
They do pay rent.
Yes, they do. They do pay.
So we've had this agreement since the 1980s. And so it was initially set up as a benefit to our school and municipal employees to be able to have parents who wouldn't otherwise be able to return to work. Since then, it's expanded to a number of community members and those, in some cases, outside of Duxbury. And so although it runs independently, they still do collaborate and make any decisions about financial decisions in terms of hiring and what money they, they do return rent to us. And they are able to, with the money that they have, they do their own playground and improvements to their classrooms. And so they also contribute to any staffing that we share. So if someone's answering the door at the cante entrance, they would contribute towards that. And their contribution towards part of a school nurse. And so they, they work with us, but they're also run as more of a separate organization. And the community ed funds all are considered to be outside of our school department operating budget. So it's self-sustaining and they should be not, or not necessarily working for a profit, but just trying to make sure that they're always breaking even and able to contribute back to the school department.
So that's why it's a revolving fund, because it's monies in, monies out to pay there. Okay. So, and I think this is something that's come up in the past. And I think it might be worth, given the budget cycle coming up, obviously, we can provide clarity and explanation and kind of explore what this looks like so that it is clear to the community what it is and how it's operating. Because I think it's something that has come up in, just in my time on the committee, kind of understanding exactly how that functions and how it fits into our budget. So.
Yeah, I think sometimes there's confusion about Magic Dragon being our preschool and our integrated preschool is actually separate. And that is run through public schools, serves students ages three to 22. So when we talk about our post-program, that's our students age 18 to 22 who require, require services. And we have children that are coming from early intervention. Through Child Find, we serve, serve students ages three, four, and five in the integrated preschool who may have disabilities and require services. And then we have peer models that would attend our integrated preschool and pay tuition. And so I always try to correct when I hear in the community that Magic Dragon is our preschool. It's a nursery school that is run through the school department, but it's separate than our, than our integrated preschool program.
And I think there's families that use both, which has crossed the hall.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did it. So, yeah. Does anybody have any clarifying questions on Lisa's report? We have a budget subcommittee meeting coming up, so if you think of something between now and then, everyone's welcome to attend anytime. Okay, great. Thank you, Lisa. Let us know when that glitch gets worked out. I'll be waiting with bated breath. Danielle, this is you, yes, opening of the school's report.
And I apologize, we're having some technical difficulties. And so I shared this presentation with Chase and Gerard in case they wanted to share their screen with Matt. And Kelly, you can use my computer.
It was in the packet. You're good.
Yeah.
We all have it in the drive. It's more for.
Yeah, my slides are there. What is not able to be shown in the slides is a beautiful song that you just choose on your own, but I'll get to that.
I cried.
Did you just sing it?
The Teacher in Me and the slides and.
So Chase said he's not willing to sing it for a repeat.
No, he needs John here.
Yeah.
I didn't know John was.
Not going to fly solo.
Yeah.
A musician.
Right?
Like, amazing. Yeah.
We have very talented students here. It's just, you don't have to go far to find, find people to entertain us or perform musical singing or instruments. But I'm happy to provide a little opening of school update to all of you. So our school year opened on August 26th for our staff. Our staff returned and began the day with meetings in their own schools with their building principals to go over everything they needed to know, any changes to the handbook and policy changes. And then they reported to convocation at noon time, which Laurel was fortunate to be able to attend so that she could hear Chase and John sing to the teachers. It was so nice. Chase had a really nice message to the teachers where he said that even if the students are having a tough day, which many are in the ins and outs of the school year, the teachers are always the rainbow in the students' day. And then they performed Rainbow, which was absolutely beautiful. And we were so appreciative. And so many teachers sent nice messages to Chase and John just saying how much it meant to them for, to be welcomed back that way. So thank you, Chase, for being so brave in performing. So we had professional development workshops on the second day of school, which was the Tuesday. And then we welcomed our students back on the Wednesday. So we had building-based meetings, emergency response training, and professional development during the two days prior to school starting. And sometimes we get questions about emergency response training for all of our staff and whether substitutes are trained. And so this summer, Dr. Wilcox had any new instructional assistants participate in a full emergency response training before, the week before school started as part of the new, new staff and new teacher induction program. And we will continue to ensure that any new staff members that are hired participate in emergency response training. And that it's, it's frequently discussed at building-based faculty meetings because questions come up that are school-specific about how to respond in different emergency situations. We have our two SROs back again. We have Mary Ellen Biddido and we have Cam Daly, who have been with us for several years. And the teachers feel comfortable to be able to go ask them any questions about their particular classroom spaces, evacuation plans, any kind of emergency response plan. And they're great about giving private, one-on-one conversations with anyone who needs help with that. We also asked teachers to ensure that students in every period at the middle school and high school know how to respond in an emergency and that it's not just a one-time, it happened to be during your English class where you did a drill of some kind. So every teacher should have a conversation with students about how to respond in an emergency. Chandler and Alden held, and DMS held building visits the night before school started. And we had successful transition programs at DMS and DHS. We also, we just want to highlight that our counselors are great about giving individual tours to any families and students who might be needing just a little extra transition support. So throughout the summer, we saw our counselors giving tours and just assuring the students that, that they would have help knowing where to go as, as they returned to school. Okay, so some numbers for you. We had 47 new student registrations that took place over the summer. So our registrar is busy throughout the summer gathering the information from families and making sure the kids are ready to go on day one. Our incoming kindergarten class size is 203 this year, so we're holding steady around 200, give or take. Our classes are generally around 190 to 220 students with a couple of situations where we have a few more or a few less. We currently had 2727, so right around 2,700 fabulous students I added. Our students are wonderful, and we were so happy to welcome them back on the first day of school. I highlighted just for you some of the different positions that Tony expressed earlier that were hired over the summer. I wanted to share that we had 1568 students register for the bus prior to the deadline, which I think was an increase from previous years. We had a lot of communication that went out. After the July 1 deadline, 300 students registered for the bus. They're about 16% of the total ridership. And on the August 27th and August 28th, we had 25 new students register for the bus. So we continue to work with our families on bus registration. And I know that's, it's always, it's always a little bit challenging. We were able to get the bus routes in the Clipper earlier. We were able to share the bus routes a little bit sooner this year. And I know that the Transportation Office has been working with families individually who have concerns about their bus stop. There are occasions where adjustments are able to be made. And there are times when we simply can't add another street onto our bus routes. And that street may have been a bus route that the bus went down the previous year. And so we do the best we can to accommodate situations. And so that's been a work in progress, and I thank everyone that's been working on that. And so that's been a work in progress, and I thank everyone that's been working on that. I included the Convocation video and my presentation slide deck for all of you, as well as Chase's, Chase and John's welcome performance. And then you can see all the teachers giving them a standing ovation. I love sharing the summer accomplishments, because I said at Convocation, some of the work we do in schools is not visible in a short period of time as kids come to us, sometimes at age three, sometimes at age five. And the growth that they make throughout their years with us is slow and gradual. But when we have some projects that are able to get done during the summer months is really satisfying. So this was an especially satisfying summer in that our open classroom conversion was completed. And I hope that you'll all be able to stop by when you have a moment, and I can take you to see the open classrooms and some pictures before and after. They worked really hard over the summer to ensure that this project was ready to be completed before our students returned. And the longest delay we had was just ensuring that we had some of the permitting pieces in place. So the classrooms look as though they were always in the building, and I think that was important to us, because that is a really beautiful building. And I know the building committee and architects worked hard, too, at the aesthetics of that building. And so the classrooms that were enclosed, that had the open wall, the tile work, is consistent with the tile that was already in the hallway. And I went to visit some of the classrooms, and there was a freshman class in there. And I said, "Do you realize where you're sitting? This was an open classroom." And they were just looking at me like, "What? Like, this whole wall wasn't here." And so we were telling the students that that had been a partition for years and that it was distracting with hallway noise. And when we had any kind of drill, it was a little bit tricky. So you will definitely love to see those completed classrooms. Our Alden communal bathrooms were completed over the summer. As was mentioned, we have 1,700 new Chromebooks that have been received. They've been given out to our DMS students and I believe our freshman class. And we have plans in the works for grade 10, 11, and 12 to receive their new Chromebooks in the next week. The tech department is working hard to get those unboxed and configured so that they're ready to go for students. The steel tennis court project was completed over the summer. It had been completed prior to tennis season last year, but the last step of that project was the painting of the court itself, and they needed to wait until the students were done, the tennis teams were done with their spring season. Lisa's been working with the company to make sure some finishing touches have been adjusted, because we're looking at it really carefully and making sure that it was exactly the way we wanted it. And so the company's been receptive to coming back and doing some little touch-ups for us. The PEG TV funding was mentioned, and that is the money that we receive from cable subscriptions in Town of Duxbury. And we had a pretty substantial amount of money that we had not been able to access for a long time, which we were able to access two years ago. And with that, we were able to do a full renovation upgrade to Dragon TV studio. In the 10 years since the high school had been built, the equipment had become obsolete and unusable in some cases. And so it's really exciting. It's like a news channel in there right now. And so Mr. Ferguson will be able to work with all of the new equipment with his students. And so we're expecting some pretty fabulous Dragon TV content this year with the new studio. As always, when we come to share with you capital needs, we're asking often for technology items such as switches and access points for the network, so that we know that the backend infrastructure of our technology will always work for students when we have all of our students on their computers at the same time. We were also able to replace and add some additional cameras to be able to allow us to see some outdoor areas and some parts of the building that were not accessible to cameras previously. And our custodial department did a wonderful job cleaning and preparing the schools this summer. I've never seen the schools so clean and prepared as I did when I was walking around this summer. So I thank our custodial department and our new facilities director, Katie St. Clair. And our facilities and maintenance staff did a nice job keeping up with the Duxbury weeds that seemed to really grow in the month of August. And we also had some landscaping done at the end of the summer so that the schools were looking ready for students. So I included some photos in the presentation for you, our tech department with all of their Chromebooks. Just an update on safety and security. I had mentioned that all of our staff have been trained in safety and security. Anyone that has not been will be trained at our upcoming Professional Development Day on November 5th. But we're, I would say, we're 98% of our staff have been fully trained. As we have done in previous years, all of our staff participate in the Darkness to Light Stewards of Children Program, which is sexual abuse prevention. And so every new staff member participated in that training during the part, the first day of their new teacher induction. And I think on the next slide, we talk a little bit about new staff orientation. Dr. Wilcox does a fabulous job planning our new staff orientation. And we had all of our new teaching staff, any new counselors, as well as any administrators who had not maybe been trained in aspects of our student technology systems or other district expectations. And so we have a three-day new staff orientation, where the first day, the teachers get all their, they get their computer, their ID badge, all their logins, so that they're ready to roll with their email or Schoology. The second day is when the mentors and the new staff members meet and work together throughout the day to learn about all things Duxbury in terms of what they need to know to hit the ground running on the first day when students come back. And then the second, the third day of the new teacher induction, there is a presentation by Caitlin Sheehan, our DEI Director. Dr. Wilcox goes over school district policies and expectations. And Mrs. Skinner goes over special education expectations in terms of all staff members familiarizing themselves with student IEP accommodations, discusses our co-teaching model and all the services that our students may be receiving in school. And then they are finishing, they finish up the day with a DBMS Takes Everyone on a Tour of the Bay by Boat, which is a really nice way to learn about Duxbury and its amazing oyster farming and aquaculture. So that was, it's a really nice three days, and our teachers feel ready to go on day one. As far as student data, when we report to you all during the school year, we have, I don't think there's any really new information. We will continue to use M-Class at the elementary level. It's an early literacy screener for all students. And then we'll continue to use I-Ready, ELA in math, K through 5. And MCAS will happen in grades three through five. Secondary-wise, our pilot of I-Ready will continue into regular implementation this year in grades six through eight, and MCAS will continue in grades six through eight. We also have AP exams that are some of our other data that we report. So we will be able to share with you some information about our end-of-the-year data at a upcoming meeting from last year, since when we have our June meeting, the data's not ready. And then we'll be reporting mid-year and end-of-the-year data, as well as our MCAS results that are coming up. Just highlighted for you all that our faculty and administration are always engaging in professional development and learning on their own. We have many professional development offerings that we offer. We have some teachers that participate in deeper learning communities of practice on their own time, which is just getting, having the opportunity to talk about student engagement at a deeper level. And that is some of the work that's happening when the Kentucky trip happens this year. That is a continuation of that deeper learning initiative. We do book studies, curriculum review work. We don't just do those curriculum reviews and put the reports away. We'll be continuing to look at the recommendations and results of the reviews that took place last year. We have our teachers and administrators attend conferences whenever possible. For example, we have the National Social Studies Conference that is in Boston this year that we're hoping to be able to send some, is it elementary and secondary educators that will be sending that to that social studies conference? There are frequently free DESI workshops. We have teachers that take college courses on their own. Something that we really promote here in Duxbury is having our staff do observations of their colleagues at different schools and different levels, and they really enjoy doing that work and have gotten a lot out of that, so we'll continue that. And our staff members belong to professional networks and organizations so that they can always have a network of people to run things by and learn from. And then finally, the last update I just shared was the year ahead in terms of our strategic plan work. We are in year three of our strategic, four-year strategic plan. This year, what is going to be our focus areas are the budget, FY26 budget planning and communication, continuing to communicate shared values and expectations vertically, so we're being as consistent as possible. One of the most important messages we shared at Convocation was that our expectation is that all of our students will reach individual growth targets with the goal of all students performing at grade-level expectations, and that includes any students on IEPs. And we always emphasize the fact that our students on IEPs are not going to reach their grade-level expectations unless our general educators are partnering with the special educators to have high expectations for all of our students. Culturally responsive teaching is embedded in the new teacher rubric, and that is just really recognizing students individually, what they need, and making sure that we're individualizing programs for our students and seeing them for their strengths and what they have to offer. The implementation of evidence-based curriculum, Dr. Wilcox mentioned our new programs that we're moving towards, ensuring that our programs are DESI-approved and the curate and that they are meeting the needs of all of our students and trying to streamline our programs so that we're not pulling resources from multiple sources, which makes it difficult for teachers. And then we'll continue to use our data to make instructional decisions. Caitlin Sheehan will be coming to an upcoming meeting to focus on where we are with the equity audit recommendations and some of the areas that we'll be working on this year. And that already mentioned is our updated teacher rubric. We'll be continuing that conversation during PD days this year with our teachers and focusing our administrative work on calibration of observation and evaluation and making sure we're being consistent with how we're writing up observations, what we're looking for in classrooms, so that there's consistency between schools. Curriculum review follow-up, we have the new math program at the middle school and the ELA pilot K through 5. Deeper learning is a focus area. We're pleased to be starting our Advanced Manufacturing Innovation Pathway. We're continuing to see if there are opportunities for us to increase our innovation pathways and then the new IEP implementation. So we have all of those as focus areas. It's a lot, but we can do it. And so that's it for the opening of school update.
Awesome. Okay. This next one is our work as a committee. And as I said, we did a couple of workshops over the course of the summer to kind of refocus our attention on our goals as a committee and how we develop those in partnership with the superintendent primarily, but ideally, the administration as a whole and all of the staff in the buildings for that matter, so that you can see kind of the constant connection and support of one another's work. And then obviously, in connection with the strategic plan. So we reviewed our goals, and they're in the packet for the public to see. We essentially, I think, felt pretty confident about them at the end of the second workshop. There were some small tweaks to kind of some of the language, I think, that I had taken notes on and made. And so the draft that you have in the packet should reflect any of the conversations that we had, but we should certainly review anything, or if anyone has any additional comments, we can make some final tweaks. And just to be clear, I think part of the goal here was that the committee and the superintendent sort of developed their goals, again, together collaboratively, so that you should see kind of mirror images of kind of our roles and responsibilities in governance and Danielle's role and responsibility in the day-to-day operations and how that is reflected in our goals and her goals alike. So we got a draft of Danielle's goals in our packet as well, which I think, you know, at this point, I guess, all of this is draft. And so rather than, we can discuss whether or not we, as a committee, want to move forward and make, you know, vote on anything that is ours. But from my perspective, I wanted to make sure that we looked at it all together before we approved anything, so that we worked in alignment going forward, which was the intention. So why don't we start with the goals? The protocols are sort of new, because those were drafted. I drafted them based on our conversations and the feedback survey that we had from our MAS C rep. But I think the goals, everybody participated in the conversation about them at the workshop. So if anybody has any input or suggestions for changes or updates that we want to make, I'm happy to do that. Open up the floor.
I have one, and it, you know, like Laurel said, I think, you know, our objective is to reflect your objectives, Dr. Klingerman, in our goals, so that we're working together towards the same mission of Duxbury Public Schools. And I think by and large, our drafts are both pretty well-aligned. One thing that I've heard multiple times this evening and also noted, kind of brought out more in your strategic plan, is the deeper learning and the social-emotional learning that, you know, I've heard you also mention and just kind of the culturally responsive goals that the community, that the school system has to really make sure from even integrated pre-K right up through age 21, right, or 12th grade, the kids are getting the same message. And so I think we, as a school committee, need to contemplate that as a part of our first goal of academic program and student achievement support. And I'd also, you know, ask when Caitlin comes at the next meeting, that we learn from her kind of how those goals tie into the curriculum specifically, because the community is asking questions about that, seeing, you know, I think, day three of your teacher launch this summer, she did the presentation, right? And so we just want to understand, I think, how all of these pieces, which I think are very important, based on some of the K-12 insight surveys and the mental health and, you know, working towards giving equitable access to all students, how are we doing that specifically within the curriculum as well? And then we can kind of loop that into our high-level goals. So that'll be my only comment. Otherwise, I think our goals are in good shape, but we're not, we don't mention that at all, and it seems to be an important part of the strategic plan and your goals as well.
You're right. Yeah. Dewey, are you imagining, Kathy, that it's, is it, is it an added action step, or is it in...
I think it's embedded. I just, I think, I can think about it and share some language suggestions, I think, because I know we've been working on this a little bit, so.
Yeah. And I'll say, I mean, my, I think always the challenge, in my experience on the committee, has just been trying to figure out how to articulate all the things.
There's a lot.
There's so many things, and having them all be included so that we don't feel like we're not, you know, attentive to a particular component. So I think it is always tricky to make sure we've got all the stuff.
Yeah, but that, that...
Just that one is definitely not called out.
I think that one piece needs to be contemplated by the school committee, too.
Yes. Okay. So potentially, we can, I would certainly welcome draft language to either, to incorporate into this first goal to then be brought to the committee to review a final time. Next.
Next session. Budget and policy, maybe not quite as thrilling, but critically important, especially this year. So hopefully, we captured those pieces.
No?
I think you...
I mean, thank you, because Kathy and Laurel, you worked a lot on aligning these together.
Trying.
So Kathy, just to clarify, you're asking about the culturally responsive piece to be added?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Because that's actually what I wrote down when Danielle was talking. And I was, I am part of the DEI committee with Caitlin, so I was going to ask her to either present to us or to explain to me anyway, so.
That's it. I think that's...
I'm with you.
After kind of reading through the materials.
Yep.
I just think we have a gap.
I agree.
Okay.
And I think, yeah, that's, that's always the challenge, is how do we, how are we, the committee, responsible for ensuring that incorporation? Or is it just educating the community, you know, via the committee, that PR role of educating the community on what it really is?
Well, and us.
Right. Well, right.
How do we know when we see it? How do we know if it's not there?
Right.
Yeah. Yeah. All of it. Yeah.
So figuring out a way to incorporate that into that first goal in some way would be awesome. Great. And again, I'm sure Caitlin will speak to it, but that won't be until after we hopefully approve these goals, so.
And she spoke about it when she did her equity...
She did.
Yeah, she did. She spoke about, which was before your time. And I think we do a good job of saying... And I think we do a good job of saying that we're aligning standard-based curriculum, educational programming, and student outcomes for all students. So I think, I mean, we can, I, I think new language regarding maybe like student outcomes and some of the, like, SEL work that's done in the district. But I think we did look to include that we wanted to ensure that, like, from, you know, start to finish, we were looking that we're sort of meeting kids where they're at, which I think is sort of how Kaitlyn speaks to that language.
Katie, is your mic on?
Yes.
It is. She's just not very close to it.
Lean in.
Katie's on the mic. I think that another thing that we can do is, when we talk about the new teacher rubric this year, I think if we pull out some of the language that's in the new teacher rubric and show where the SEL language in the culturally and linguistically responsive teaching practices have been added, you'll see that it's not so much changes in curriculum that we're talking about, it's really the way we teach, so that you're incorporating those practices into, into getting the content across to the students. And so I think we can do a better job articulating that, pulling that out of what the teacher rubric is, and the new rubric really does highlight those areas. And we just want to make sure that we're giving the teachers the resources they need, and I think that's where it ties into the budget. The resources they need to be able to be responsive to social and emotional learning needs as well as culturally responsive, and that they have the resources and whatever they need in their classroom to be able to do that.
To meet kids where they are. Right, which is really the goal.
Yeah, and that, it's going to be IAs sometimes, it's going to be special ads.
Yeah, and sometimes it's programs. I know Dr. Wilcox and I have gone to some, meet with some vendors that just have some resources that are enable teachers of math at the high school level to embed social and emotional learning into the math lesson, no matter what the rigorous topic may be. And so sometimes it's looking at resources to be able to better engage students, so that they're hands-on and active, and it's just giving banks of ideas. And so that's how we can fit it into. And so I think we'll be talking about that when we share curriculum needs for the future in our recommended budget.
Right. And I think the biggest, and I'm, I'm going to voice what I perceive the concern to be around social-emotional learning, that somehow we are replacing academic rigor with social and emotional focus, right? And I think while we understand that is not the intention, I think for a variety of reasons that is maybe the perception sometimes, and so the more we can do to illustrate it's both and and necessary for, for us students to be successful, to have all of those components, not at the expense of academic rigor or academic-focused curriculum, if you will. So I think that's kind of the, the concern generally around that sensitive topic.
Well, I think you hear social-emotional, you think feelings, like, you think that's, but I just was thinking of a meeting I had with you where we talked about math and the fact that some kids need, like, or a lot of kids benefit from tactile.
Manipulatives, manipulatives, right.
And I feel like that's, it's still math, it's just a, and I view that almost as like social-emotional, because it's like.
Right.
That culturally responsive, like, that's how they learn better. So I think that's, and I don't, I would never have known that, and I, you know, had I not spoken to you. So I think it goes with the education piece, where we talk about the education.
The eyeballs from the classroom.
Sorry. Sorry. But no, I just, if, if they, like, as a district, now you're working really hard at that, but to let people know some of the language isn't always what they interpret it to be.
Yeah, I think it's not clear, and I think when we talk about culturally responsive, it really means high expectations and higher expectations than we've had for all students, and not watering down and being less rigorous. And when we talk about social-emotional learning and engaging students in deeper learning, that doesn't happen when a teacher is standing in front of the kids and they're all staring at the teacher compliant, listening, and that they're not touching things, they're not moving, they're not talking to each other. And so those are examples, as we advance in the grades, of not soc-, not culturally responsive and not engaging our students, so that they're interacting with each other, learning to talk to each other, learning to understand different people's perspectives. And if our kids aren't interacting in that manner, we're not using SEL and we're not being culturally responsive. So it's kind of rethinking that it's not stand and deliver, and if you are heavily content-based, where you have a lot of content to get across, how can we engage the students so they're active participants and they're actually discovering the learning on their own versus us just telling them the knowledge and expecting them to memorize it and give it back to us.
And I think a lot of that was represented in the curriculum reviews, too. Specifically, I'm remembering the comment about more manipulatives and visuals in the classrooms around math. So hopefully, as we talk about all of that stuff, it will filter in and illustrate the things we're talking about. But how we get that into like a.
I'm sorry.
No, I think it's, no! No, I didn't, I did not want them to be final. In fact, I was hopeful that we could have a conversation, so that when we did get there next meeting, to vote, we would vote them together. And I think that's actually, that was my, that was my hope, not that we would finish them today.
Tap Kaitlyn on the faculty map.
Yeah.
For her language.
Yeah, around how to do that.
That's good.
Okay, so we'll get that language in. Anything else?
Just a general question on both documents. There are some, there are some terms that are like in all caps, and I'm just wondering.
Why? You know, no, 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 it's like.
Like all?
Yeah, like all students through data-driven budgetary, like all materials for an upcoming meeting, all requests for information, all information is distributed.
Wait, wait, what do you, what do you mean? Oh, you're looking at protocols, too.
Yeah. There's some, so there's, just feels like there's some emphasis on certain things, and I'm curious as to.
Yeah, all things. All things. Yeah, no, honestly, I'm not certain that I even was cognizant.
It's late night.
It was, I don't think it was, yeah.
Yeah. Well, I think all students, actually, I will stand by, that one is intentional. The protocols, I'm less confident about why I capitalized all of those. So we can, we can talk about that.
And then, like, equal opportunity is given emphasis.
Where's that one?
Page 39, like, because I liked, I liked the content of these documents.
Are you talking about protocols? Sorry.
Yeah, protocols on item three. So it's, I find both of these documents to be great. They're empowering, but when I see sort of like the emphasis on certain things, I feel like it's almost excessive, but I don't know, I'm sure that's not your intent, but.
No, definitely not. And I'm just realizing, under policy, I didn't spell out MASC, so I should probably do that. I just use the acronym under the policy goal, which I tried not to do, so that anyone can read and understand them. Do I need to spell out PTO, PTA, or do we feel pretty confident? Okay. So are we, are we okay with all students? That was intentional in the goals. We can get to the protocols next.
How come?
Um, how come? How come we did that, Kathy?
Yeah. And then, and our mission is each, each student, so we're just encompassing them all.
Okay.
But I'm open, I mean.
It's, I mean, I don't, it's like a deal breaker either way in any of them. I was just curious as to why.
Yeah, no, the protocols, you're right. I'm not, that one, I'm not as confident about this one. It felt like it was intentional. So the, so the backstory on the protocols, we were all there, so I don't know that I need to illustrate this. The, the MASC rep sat down with us to kind of talk about some of the pain points we've had or challenges, communication, whatever, all the things, so that we could decide, a lot of committees have protocols around just sort of basing up, basic operating procedures, so that everybody is crystal clear, and I know it was great to have, it's always good to have a new member come on with new eyes to say, well, where do I, how do I know how to do X, Y, or Z? And protocols are usually the place where you find that kind of guidance. So we did a great exercise with the rep, with the, they call it the issues worksheet summary, which feels a little bit negative, but that was something we did as a committee, and out of that came then, in the second meeting, a discussion of what those things were and where we felt like we might need a protocol in response to the feedback that we provided in that worksheet. So, as I said, I, I did this by myself, because it's hard to build a document as a group, but I would really like for everyone, when we approve this, these will be our operating protocols for the year. And then, the intention is to revisit them each year, and particularly when a new member comes on, obviously, it's great to have new eyes and discussion. So it's a, it's a living document in that way. So, have at it.
I think Matt wasn't at that meeting where we went over the issues thing.
Right. I should have, I'm realizing now, I probably should have included the issues worksheet in our drive, so that you had it as a, to revisit, but I think we all had it from that meeting, so hopefully you saved it. Matt, to your, I, I'm happy to, so, full disclosure, some of these actually come from, there are lots of different committees that have them set up in different ways. We were given a couple of examples in our workshop, and so I definitely snagged some language from those. Some of them are MASC sort of recommended basic protocols, that's kind of what you see in that first section, very general. And so equal opportunity, I think, was actually just a cut-and-paste situation, but we can take that out of italics. I think we've talked as a committee about making sure that each person talks once before anyone speaks twice. I felt like that, hopefully captured that a little bit. Specifically around agenda planning, this is something that I think I want to make sure we, we get it, you know, right, so it's clear for everyone how that process goes, because I think it's been sort of just something we just do a little bit off the cuff, but it's important. And so I want to make sure that this captures and is clear for anyone. I did not compose a sample agenda yet. I will, I will do that before we vote them through, because I have a question about removing, we voted to remove the second public comment, but it still says in our, until the policy is revised and we vote the change to policy, I wasn't confident that I should pull it off of the agenda. So we can do that in the future, but I, I don't want to compose a sample agenda until we have the final version, so we can do that and add it as an appendix.
I guess the only question, so under agenda planning, the second bullet says, planning meetings not to extend beyond two and a half hours. That is actually, these words, right?
It is, she's not very, no, it's on.
I like the way you put it, then, of last guy.
Yeah.
Just make sure that's on, please, anyone.
Is that this meeting not to, because I know we talked about.
Planning meetings not, yeah, that's not great grammar there.
So we can say.
These meetings should not last more than two and a half hours. Our intention is to plan school committee meetings that do not last more than, how are we doing?
Forty-five minutes.
Yes, because I just checked my. Yeah.
We'll make it.
I was joking.
I thought we said two hours. Who added the extra half?
Laurel. I, that was.
I thought too, as well.
Common practice.
In that case, like.
And I was trying to be realistic, let's be honest. Planning hour, if I say planning hour meetings not to extend beyond.
I don't, but that seems like a pre-meeting, like this.
Planning meetings, I know.
Isn't this the meeting you were thinking about?
Yes, yes.
But the chair will plan the agenda so that it will not exceed.
It will not extend.
Right. So whatever we have for the agenda is up to the chair to figure out.
So what, what, just say hour.
Content not to extend beyond two and a half hours.
So the language, yeah.
School committee meetings not to extend.
I just want to be clear on this.
Yes, yeah. I'm just going to write school committee meetings.
Not to extend five hours.
School committee meetings not to extend beyond two hours. Two and a half, sorry. You like two?
We like two.
Do you want to drop it down to two? I don't know that that's realistic.
Well, it's not like, it's the end of the world if it goes over.
The intention is to be two.
Yeah.
Okay, we can go two, I'll take the half off.
Well-intentioned.
Yeah, we talked about putting things that were important at the beginning of the agenda, because what the representative said, that is, if you're saving things that are more intensive for the end of the meeting and you, everyone's been sitting there for an hour and a half, two hours, that's not the time to start a conversation.
Engage in difficult conversation.
That is difficult. So to adjust the agenda, there might be at times, he said, to do the reports at the end, because that's lighter, and to do the heavier items that are more controversial or intense at the beginning. So that was, I think, part of the planning.
And I think one of the other pieces along those lines was when we're planning meetings, the consent agenda, the hope was the trial run on that would shorten, shorten in and of itself, so that we would get right to the material of the meeting a little bit sooner, i.e. earlier. I think, I'm hopeful that we, in planning the agendas, dependent on the content, we will simply adjust the order to try and achieve that as a, but if we feel like we want to state it in a protocol, we can do that, too. I was hoping the kind of timeframe that we set would be sufficient.
I have a question. Chris, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I'm just trying to, just a clarification question, because I missed the August 29th meeting, but in the minutes on August 29th, it says that under agendas, the decision was made to have policy subcommittee draft steps for, and this is how members can request something to be placed on the meeting agenda, and in this protocol document, there's a section for agenda planning. Does this agenda planning include those steps, or are we looking for steps for requesting to add an agenda item to a meeting?
That's a good point, and I did review that.
Just reconcile the two things.
I made a little bit of an executive decision to be discussed here, to address exactly what you're saying, which is that the suggestion from the rep generally was to put things in policy that are protocol-related is complicated, because then you're reviewing policies as opposed to reviewing your working protocol document each time. And so that discussion and sort of conclusion note was contrary to that, and so I'm, I'm, it's open for discussion whether we feel like we needed to be a policy around the agenda and how you do that, or is that a protocol, how we proceed as a committee?
Well, more fundamentally, I just want to know, do you want us to, do you want us to do something?
Yeah, no, I know, and I think, right.
I don't care what we call it, I mean, we can talk about that in a minute, but like, are we, is there an assignment for the policy subcommittee to write steps for?
I don't think there needs to be.
Only if we want it to be.
Right, that's sort of what we should decide here. I attempt, my attempt was to capture sufficient work here, that that would be, we could determine that that was unnecessary, if we felt comfortable with what we have here. But again, that's, it's sort of, that was a fairly loose discussion.
I would, I would suggest we just do it, I did one two years ago, with a little video on it. I don't know if you guys saw, but the steps, remember when you first started and you said, like, how do we get an item, and I sent the thing out? So it would be a his list, because the only thing that's missing from here is that what happens if you decide that it doesn't get on the agenda? So there's a couple of details I would put in there, like, so for example, I ask you, if we can put something on the agenda, you're like, well, made a decision, I don't want to, but how does that get communicated back to me? Does it get communicated back to me, sort of thing?
Right.
So I think there's some details that are missing in here, that I would recommend that we do sort of like put it in, so that there's, everyone's very much on the same page with regard to getting items on the agenda, because that's been sort of the point of contention off and on over the last few years.
Right. I think the challenge, that, what I was hoping, and I don't disagree that we need further detail on how the feedback loop is on that, I think what's been missing, the focus for the committee this year is that our goals should drive what's on the agenda. So if you, if we are inviting some, if someone wants to put something on the agenda, whether a member or a staff person or whatever it is, there has to be presented to the chair how, why? Why, why should we be, you know, talking about that as a committee? Where does it fit in with, outside of emergency or safety issues, with the goals that we've set, as opposed to just sort of an FYI, I want to give a presentation on X?
Yeah, that, the, the, the document that I'm talking about does have that step in there, too. You should explain to the chair why you want to put it on the agenda, for example, is it for the strategic plan, is it related to student outcomes or whatever? So I think it would be helpful just to sort of delineate, delineate those steps, so that everyone understands what they need to do to get something on the agenda. And the one item that I would probably, again, sort of argue that we need a little bit more detail than this on, is that I think there is an area sometimes where a member wants to put something on the agenda that may not necessarily be related directly to the strategic plan or the goals. So a good example is last year, the Alden Historical Society came to us to ask us to vote on something around the. So a good example is last year, the Alden Historical Society came to us to ask us to vote on something around the protecting that site. I'd have a hard time finding the strategic plan, but it is something that we have to vote on. So I'd like to make, I, I just, I would, my opinion would be that it's helpful, and I think it should be required, to explain to the chair what the rationale is for putting something on the, the thing. And you have the right to say, I don't think it should be on, but I'm a little bit hinky about like always making sure that it's connected to the goals, because I think that there is going to be some sort of peripheral stuff that doesn't necessarily, you can always make an argument for anything that it could be connected to the goals, but sometimes I don't think it's a clear through line, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I think the, I'm trying to think of the language.
And any item under your purview. So if someone, if you, if you didn't explicitly have a goal, but the Alden Kindred, it's your decision about whether you wanted to enter into an agreement with them, that's a school committee decision, so that's within your purview. So I feel like it's your goals or anything, policy, budget, superintendent, any of those specific items that are your oversight.
What defines our purview again?
So policy.
I'm kidding, our policy, I'm joking.
Policy, budget.
I'm going to list them out. I'm teasing.
I think policy, because of policy, it's so comprehensive that I, I, it would be hard to find something that doesn't fit somewhere under a policy that's in the school committee's.
Right, or under the school committee's purview per our policies or something like that, okay.
I'm sorry, yeah, go ahead, no, go ahead.
So using the Alden Kindred as an example, is that something, I understand it's in our purview, so we need to vote on it. Is that something we could vote on in a Zoom meeting at a set time, that we make a public notice, but we don't need to reserve time during our two-hour meetings?
I think that would be up to the chair.
Like that might be for stuff that doesn't.
If they want to call a special meeting for something, yeah.
Unless it's.
It's not related to committee.
Personally, I'm not so sure, I, I don't think a lot of this stuff's going to come up. I, I think the bigger, I think the bigger point is that it should be made clear that a school committee member, if they want to have something on the agenda, they need to be able to make the case for it. They should be making the case to you. You then make the decision on whether you think it's a good enough case to put on the agenda.
Right.
It's pretty simple.
Yep, and I think your point about the feedback loop is important, so. So let's, I'm going to add like subbullets maybe under that, that are.
Yeah, I can just send you what I have, I have a document and I have a video, so yeah, it's pretty, pretty.
Yeah, so I can add that. And then we would feel like our protocols dictate that as opposed to having to add language to the policy.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, like, I agree with you, I'm not so sure that it has to be a policy, but I do think that it's a operating norm. And the less sort of, you know, blurriness there is on the operating norm, I think the less problems we're going to have, like, arguing about what needs to go on the agenda or not.
Totally. I actually think the twenty-minute presentations also snagged maybe a bit long. So would anyone be opposed if I said fifteen?
Dean's good.
Matt, do you want him to be twenty?
I think if you put twenty, it'll be twenty-five, I think if you put fifteen, it'll be thirty in some cases, it happens for, you know what I mean?
Unless they have special permission. I think the goal is, yeah, the presentation is supposed to be brief.
You could put it in all caps.
In all caps? I am, I'm going to put it in bold and highlight it, actually. So I'm going to throw in fifteen minutes and be confident that, yes, there will likely be. The goal with this is that the presentation should not be the bulk, the discussion and the questions and the Q and A is supposed to be what we do here, not the presentation, anyone can read slides, they're in the packet, all those components.
What we talked about was no more dog and pony show. If there's a request for information, people are welcome to do it via a slide deck that's not shown and that they have a bullet document that just states the highlights of it, and not to feel obligated to go over all five of their slides or to do whatever. So I think that when it comes to data or curriculum presentations, that would be our recommendation to shorten them, because I think people don't realize how long you talk on each slide. And I, as I say this, I probably did that on the opening of school report. I'll practice what I just said, starting next meeting.
Yeah, and I think there was a commitment from the, who I, I didn't get it from our MASC person before he retired. There is seemingly a guidance document that is general, that can be shared about what you expect in a presentation. I hope that we can do that together, so that staff are clear. If a committee member requests a presentation, then I would expect you to outline what it is you want to see. But as it relates to data, we can hopefully do that, and I can even run it by the committee to make sure that that is sufficient. So that the staff, in fairness to them, understand what it is we're asking for. I don't think we have always been very clear in the past, and that's probably part of the challenge. Okay.
Only other thing, sorry, in how we improve is, we had talked about a mid-year review for both school committee goals and superintendent goals. So like December, Jan, after the break, maybe January or something, just a check-in to say, okay, here were our goals reminder, right, that we're going to finalize hopefully next month, let's do a check-in. And I didn't see that in our protocol, how we improve, I think it would be relevant.
Yeah, I, you know what, I was assuming that was what self-evaluation was referring to, but you might be right.
I just think holding ourselves accountable to that.
Yep, and it will be, it's already on the agenda. Danielle's mid-year check-in at the same time, we will have our own. But I can put it in here just more specifically, for review.
Yeah, because you say superintendent and school committee agree to set aside time on an annual basis for self-evaluation, so like a mid-year and.
On a mid-year and annual, got it.
And then we can decide the timing.
I think we added it to the agenda draft that's in the shared folder around January.
When yours is, we'll do ours.
My only, on under communication, it says that any communication, electronic or hard copy received in the capacity of a school committee member should be forwarded to the superintendent, whatnot, whatnot. I mean, if I'm being frank, I had four parents text me about the bus, and I was like, I was like, reach out to the bus company and the business manager, sorry. But, do you know what I mean, I, I don't.
Well, you're directing that communication, so I think that's efficient. This is, this came from MASC as a recommended communication protocol, so that it's crystal clear that no one member is, you didn't say to them, oh, let me help you fix your bus problem, right? So that's what this is trying to address, I think. But if you feel like there's a way, definitely that we can.
No, you can leave it, I mean, I just.
I know, I was thinking electronic is email, but you're right, text messages are.
Well, I just mean, yeah, in general, like, I think we used to have, you know, like, what are those called?
Office hours?
Yeah.
That's on the list to talk about tonight.
I feel like, I feel like it's been, anytime you're receiving information that's a trend or that multiple people have reached out, if it's something that you've redirected and it's, I think the school committee has typically just let the superintendent know that this is coming up.
Right.
And so.
And that's, I think, what this.
I don't think that necessarily every single text or email you receive needs to be forwarded, because I think sometimes people go to you for a reason, and I think that as long as you communicate trends or anything that's really essential, that you feel like we should know. If, you know, if it's not a trend and it's just a one-off, but it's really important, that, that to me would be appropriate as opposed to every single electronic communication.
Be important, I think, and I think this was part of what came up, I know Kathy asked, when we get in, we get the emails in our inbox to all of us, I think, I wanted to be clear that I try and CC the rest of the committee if I do a response, as we did during the custodial situation. So there's a response that goes to everyone. If you pick up the phone, that's different, you're going to have an individual conversation with someone, so it's, there's some gray area.
Well, I had a question about that one, because if we get, receive an email to the whole committee, I know in times past, some people have picked up the phone and called that person who's written the letter. So now we're saying, really, that should just be you.
No, I, I, well, I wouldn't agree with that.
Right, no. I don't think that's, I think.
That's what it says.
I'm reading this communication section as it's written, mostly this, to me, this reads about the spirit of speaking for the committee. No one, no one can speak for the committee except for the chair. I think the third bullet is a little unclear, so like, any, any communication received in the capacity of a school committee member, I don't really know what that means. Any communication received in the capacity of a school committee member.
If somebody calls you because you're on school committee.
Well, right, they're, they're addressing a, an issue to you because you're a school committee member. Not because you're my friend who's, you know, so-and-so's parent or whatever it is. They're addressing the issue to.
If they use your school committee email, would you consider that to be in your capacity as opposed to if you ran into somebody and they mentioned something, I don't know.
Well, I, again, I just didn't understand, I'm, I'm getting the clarification now, I appreciate it. So like, yeah, if any communication received in the capacity of a school committee member should be forwarded to the superintendent, chair and vice chair. So if someone sends me an email with a complaint or piece of feedback, I should take that and forward it to you three. That's fine with me.
Well, I, I mean, I think that's what we do, is we want, this was, this, these three bullets were actually part of an MASC guidance document around managing communication, and to your point, I think they are primarily trying to address this concept of no one should speak as an individual for the committee. This one was, it was a little, it was sort of surprising to me, so I threw it in here, and I think we should figure out how we, this, these are ours, right? So.
Yeah, I mean, the, I mean, the two things I would say is that, like tactically on this particular one, I would say that, you know, we should be following the chain of communication as it relates to being on school committee. So if someone calls me or sends me an email with maybe, let's say, in their mind, it's like an action item, something has to be done about it, ninety-nine times out of a hundred, I direct them to the teacher.
Right.
Because that's my job, my job is to just say, well, that's not my idea, like, you got to go to the teacher. And sometimes I'll put in a little extra, I'll just say, and if the teacher doesn't give you what you want, then you go a little higher. Then you go a little higher, that's all the, sort of the chain, the chain of communication. A lot of this stuff, I was thinking about, there's some language in here which I think is good, and it conforms or comports with something you had said when you first started, like having like an onboarding document. So last November, when I went to the MASC conference, there were like at least three sessions where, for whatever reason, the same recommendation was made very strongly. Every school committee should have a, a school committee handbook, which we don't have. I think it would be, I think this is great for operating norms and protocols. I would like us to consider putting together a more holistic handbook, because it would fill in, I think, a lot of these sort of kind of gray areas that aren't one hundred percent like cut, you know, cut and dried. That would provide, I think, the clarity that you can't really fit in a protocol document. And then also, I think it is good for onboarding, it's just like any job. It's like when you start a job and you start a company, the first thing you should probably get is like a handbook, new employee handbook, so you know what's going on. So anyway, I don't, you know, I'm not asking for a motion or a vote to do it, but I think it's something for us to consider.
Yeah, I think, didn't we ask, didn't we ask Jim, and he said a lot of them don't, don't. Well, it's up to the committee, I guess.
I'm just saying.
I'm not just a conversation. If you can get your hands on.
I, yeah, I have a few, I, yeah. There, you know, it's, it's not like a huge lift, it's a little bit tedious, but it does get at all of the little kind of gray, just like what we just talked about. Like you get a call, you should, you know, you should direct them, direct the parent or the family member, I'm just going from memory, direct the parent or family member to the, you know, the administrator or the teacher that is responsible.
But who does that, like, who is, where is the word on what goes in the handbook coming from, I guess, is my, like, for clarity's sake of like, are we just taking it from MASC, like they have?
No, MASC, I haven't found one from MASC, but I found a few from other surrounding districts that are really good.
But it's just been the committee essentially who decides what the protocols are within that handbook?
I would assume it's decided by the committee, yeah. And I would recommend that we just do, you know, we, we could assign it to policy subcommittee, but I would recommend that we come up with a draft document and then just allocate some time in a meeting to just review and decide whether it's appropriate to, to have as an artifact.
And this is like the executive summary of that, or different? This, these are operating protocols, and that is a handbook that is given, that all members abide, abide by or and/or services orientation for new members?
Yeah, I mean, I almost look at it, I almost look at like, the handbook is a more comprehensive version of this. I think this is great for operating norms and protocols around like how we conduct ourselves in meetings and all the rest of it. Yeah, but if I put myself in Kathy's position when she started, and anybody, when you first start, it's like your brain's completely full. What are you supposed to do? Oh, I guess I should look at the policies, great, there's five hundred of them. Should look at some other meeting, you know, it's just like you're completely lost at sea. But if you had a handbook that just had like, okay, step by step, this is what you're supposed to do, yeah.
No, I mean, I'm, do you really want, Kelly, he just signed you up.
He'll write it.
Yeah.
Holbrokism, I'm sure there's a lot, well, don't, don't think that I wrote all these. These all came from a variety of other school committee protocols.
I'm just, I'm stuck on this one, that first communication, only the school committee chair and his or her designation shall have the authority to speak for the school committee to other public bodies, the media, which has always been the protocol, or individuals who reach out to the body as a whole. So we get an inbox email from somebody that we all see, that means only the chair responds. It doesn't mean I pick up the phone because I'm passionate about.
I think you're mis, I think you're misreading it, I think you're, I think you're.
See, I don't think I am. Only the chair.
No, it does say that.
And, or individuals.
Authority to speak for, there's a difference between.
Right, so that does, that means that you, Matt, can't call Chase because he sent an email to all of us about cell phones. It means only Laurel can.
If someone, if someone calls, if someone sends an email to the whole school committee.
The whole committee.
Complaining about the COVID lockdown, I can call that, I can call that, that parent to get more information and to try to understand the perspective. I'm not speaking for the school committee. I'm trying to understand more information that's going to help inform decisions that I make as a school committee member.
Okay, I think that should be delineated.
I think the salient part of this, I think the salient part of this bullet is authority to speak for the school committee.
For the school committee.
That's right.
I am speaking to you as Mac Ambino, a member.
Yeah, I'm just asking questions and, you know, that's it. And if we don't do that, we're going to have a problem as a school committee, because like, we're only allowing the chair to like communicate with.
Yeah, no, I don't need that. So how do we make sure that that is crystal, is there another?
Because to me, that wasn't crystal clear.
I know. For the committee, do I put that in italics?
Well, I think, I think, I actually think the, I think something that we can work on in this one is actually the word communication. I think that this is probably, I think the title of this needs to be a little bit different, you know, speaking for, it should be something around the lines of like speaking for the school committee. Or, you know, speaking for the school committee authority or something, because that's where I think at least the first two bullets fall under this. Who gets to speak for the school committee? Nobody, just the chair.
Right, so she would only respond on something that we had already voted on or talked about or?
Well, it's no, it's, again, it's not responding, anyone can, in my view, anyone can respond.
No, but Laurel, so she's only responding with something, she's only speaking on behalf of the committee if we've discussed it and voted on it.
That's right.
If it's, if it's an action of the committee, or a decision of the committee, right.
So that doesn't matter.
I think blah, blah, blah.
So are you talking about times where a school committee chair has had to make a public statement?
Well, that's clear.
That's encapsulated, that's the media.
While any member is able to listen to concerns from the community, only the chair is able to respond directly on behalf of the committee?
Yeah, to say this is the will of the committee, as opposed to, hey, tell me a little bit more about what you're talking about here. Those are very different conversations, so.
And I give my opinions to parents all the time, but I always preface it by saying I'm speaking for myself as an individual member, I'm not speaking for the school.
I just want to make sure that that's protected, if you will, you know.
To do that, I think that's within our, yeah. And I think maybe the hand, that might clarify, I don't know that we necessarily, if you want to change the heading, I'm, that's, I'm up for that, I stole these from somewhere else too.
Yeah, I mean, this is clear to me, I mean, it's clear to me anyway.
Hopefully the handbook would provide.
Apparently I'm the.
No, it's because you read it.
One on the IEP that needed that explained to me in a different way, in my culturally sensitive.
So you did a close reading of.
Oh, I take word for, yeah.
So are we, I will make the change to add the mid-year and annual, that's the only note I have, am I, am I? Oh, and, I'm sorry, and I'm going to look at Matt's document and just add some subbullets under the agenda so that the kind of step-by-step is clear? And then we'll bring it back for a final review and vote.
That sounds good.
I can't believe it's already. Okay. What is the budget FY26 bucket? Is there, I'm sorry.
We put it on there, we can give an update on the meeting that took place on August 26.
I'm out of, I'm going out of order, I'm just wanting to clarify, okay.
Generally speaking, with what the select board voted on, I thought that would just be an FYI.
So there's no, there's no presentation in, it was more just an update, okay. I just wanted to understand what that was, I should have asked you that. Okay, so three's done, do we, let's continue then. Draft superintendent goals, which Danielle provided, and then the strategic action plans.
Yep, I don't have a presentation that was a sharing. Yep, I don't have a presentation that was a sharing. I had, I'm not sure, I can't recall if I had shared them previously, but those have been looked at and really worked on for the whole summer. And so, again, this is a draft and I know members might have feedback, but we're really struggling with how to write our goals so that they're smart and actionable and not too detailed while also capturing the work of the entire district and the focus for this year. And so we've changed the way we've set them up. We've made adjustments and we're open to feedback, but I just think Beth and I have the same goals in terms of the work we're leading as far as strategic plan, focus areas for this year. And we're open to, to writing those out in any way that the school committee feels is the most clear and appropriate. But I feel at this point, we've been staring at them for many months and they're a bit overworked. And so I don't know if we, if anyone's feeling like they're not the way that we have the KPIs listed or the action items, I just wanted to hear some feedback tonight about where we are with that. And then in the future, I feel like it might be a good workshop item in the summertime if we have a summer retreat to do it all together as a working session, as opposed to us doing many, many drafts and working with the admin team and then presenting and then going back to the drawing board. Because essentially, the goals are important, but I want you to all know what we're focusing on this year and it may not be all encompassing in a goals document. And so our job is to make sure you all know what we're doing and how we're accomplishing that and if we're on track. So we've changed the formatting so many times, but hopefully we can get some closure eventually because it's been a lot.
Do you want, let's, why don't we start with the goals, Danielle's goals draft, and then we'll get to the action plans after that? I think obviously this stuff, just sort of from a helicopter view, the intention behind the action plans is to, that is district-wide action plans, which are then going to be reflected in the school improvement plans, building by building, how they will action, what's delineated here. And then obviously, it all rolls back up to the strategic plan. And then our goals and Danielle's goals are essentially to be in support of achieving what is set out in those plans. Does that make, that was not very clear?
I had, the only reason I'm looking at my phone is I'm looking at the document.
That's okay.
Because I ran out of paper. So just so everyone knows.
It's true. Yes. Strategic plan, the action plans are annual, and the strategic plans are also annual, as are the goals. So, but we have to go piece by piece. So why don't we start with Danielle's goals and allow people to provide feedback and then we can get to the action plans?
And they're both Danielle and Beth's goals. You guys are sharing the same goals, so I see that at the top here as well.
Did you put that in here? I have an old copy.
Yep, both at the top.
Yep. I might have given you a copy on Friday.
No, you didn't. Good, we're good. Go.
Want me to go?
Whoever's, whoever's up.
I only have one. Thank you for putting them together and I do appreciate, like, you are trying to wrangle a mountain of stuff that you're working on this year. So my only observation, I guess, is in your second professional practice goal, specifically in your action plan. There are a lot of references to me that seem to tie to the look-for guide, and I don't see look-for guide specifically referenced in there. So I might be wrong, but it seems like that should be a part, which is, I think, 2.3.
Are you looking in our goals or the?
In your, so in your goals, number two, improving instruction and consistency. I think a big part of that this year is your rubrics and look-for piece, but I just don't see it articulated in, I, I see steps that I think all tie to that, but you might wanna reference it just because then in your action plans, 2.3 goes into a lot of detail about that. And so for evaluating and just holding ourselves accountable, we can kind of reference that.
That's a great point. I think one of the things that. That is a great point. One of the things that we have been looking at is the, or one of the things that came out of our curriculum reviews last year was the amount of documents that we had as well. And so being mindful of that, I think it's important. The look-for guide served as a bridge from the old evaluation rubric to the new evaluation rubric, so certainly something that we can consider. And that we've started to take out of some documents is the look-for guide because the, the look-fours are actually reflected in the evaluation rubric, so that is certainly something, the new one. And so I think that as we move forward with it not being represented in the professional practice goal, that was intentional, but we are slowly taking out language in other places.
Got it.
About the look-fours. Not because we aren't still focusing on that, but because it is represented in the updated rubric language.
Okay.
And so just ensuring what we are using.
Okay, thank you. And then I guess just to add to that as far as an action step, I was really excited to hear about the, you know, consistent rubrics that you guys are implementing throughout the year and the classes and the observations has been very positive, but now you're gonna have some tangible feedback, like similar documents, it sounds like, for each classroom. I think, I, I would like to see, you know, like a couple of case studies of, here's what we did in this class, you know, it's not necessarily a report, kind of to Laurel's point on like, what exactly do we wanna see? But I think it would be really helpful to see case studies of how you can find improvement based on, you know, a rubric of what you saw that then ties to this improving instruction and consistency. Okay, how did the student benefit from that in the classroom? So I don't, I don't know that you like, I don't know if you add it as a action plan item or just in.
I think what we've done is use previously written observations and evaluations with names redacted in the school to do comparison work on how we give feedbacks. We, we have done exercises of that nature as part of our administrator training, so maybe we can just include some of those actions that we do as a calibration exercise throughout the year to get on the same page.
Yeah, because I know we're investing in this new curriculum and a lot of professional development training. I think it would be good to just see some examples of that.
And we are doing walk-fours for different purposes. So, and I think when we do the walkthroughs, it's important for us just to be clear on the purpose of the walkthroughs. For example, with the administrative team, when we're doing walkthroughs, it's really for the.
Oh, sorry. Just not speaking loud enough. Right in the mic.
Sorry.
It's on, it's on.
It's just far away.
We'll be doing walk-for, walk, sorry, I'm tired. Walk-throughs for various purposes. And so I think it'll be important for us to make sure that we are clear on what the purpose of the walkthrough is. For example, with the administrative team, that we will be walking into classrooms in small groups observing, teaching and learning, but it's not necessarily, it is more for us as administrators to learn how would we respond as individuals and then to talk about that and what did we see and how do we improve our consistency. For example, if Danielle, Dr. Klingeman and I walk into a classroom, would I then give the teacher the feedback, that was fantastic, I saw inquiry, there was questions, students were collaborating, there was a lot of talking? And then would Dr. Klingeman give that same feedback or would she be saying something that didn't align with that? So that's one purpose of the walkthroughs for us as an administrative team to learn from each other. And I think that's important so that teachers feel comfortable when we walk into the classrooms that it's for the administrators learning. And it's not a piece of the evaluation process.
Supervisory, gotcha.
It's not the supervision piece of it. And then there will be walkthroughs that teachers will be conducting of their colleagues and that's for their professional learning and really highlighting the great things that are happening and takeaways. So that's a, and if, if there's something that we can clarify in here to delineate the different types of walkthroughs and the purposes, we can do that.
Yeah, and even hearing those positive experiences, like a couple of those, not, I don't mean to say, you know, we evaluated this teacher, you don't wanna, you know, fear going into the classrooms, but.
Exactly, and that is one, right, and this is a process where we're all growing, we're all learning. We as administrators are growing and learning and it's the hope that the teachers are, are learning from each other and as part of the walkthroughs, too. And so we, it's a growth opportunity.
And I think, again, actually Kathy did go through the, it's so bizarre because you get elected and then you go through the superintendent evaluation right away, even though you've had very little experience. But I think some of the evidence, you know, that's sort of inviting that part of it as it relates to how you achieved the goals that you've set out to, to take. So hopefully that can be reflected there. Kathy, is that?
That was all.
Can I just add the first, the student learning goal, it says by June 2026. Is that intentional?
It is because some of the, we feel so, our whole purpose in our roles at central offices to ensure that our student achievement is moving in the right direction and we're closing achievement gaps. And we know that with some of the programs we're implementing, that change doesn't necessarily come through in one year.
Okay.
So we did it at the end of the, the strategic plan and we know that we're implementing some new programs, hoping that there's not an implementation gap. But I think our overarching goal is always with our student achievement outcomes and trying to get as many students that proficient or at least reaching their goals. So we did that on purpose.
Okay. I'm wondering if there's a way for you to articulate, given that this is, you know, we will be evaluating you then as if it's an annual goal, is there a way to, you know, we know that's the overarching goal, is there a breakdown or a, something that you do feel like would be representative of the progress toward that overarching goal that you could somehow delineate? I mean, obviously, the actions are.
I think it's through, I think it's through our data reporting to you three times a year. And so using benchmark assessments along the way, I can add a way that we're reporting progress towards that three times per year. And that would validate why we're doing data meetings at school committee to give you updates on how our students are performing and not just a once annual, how we did on MCAS the year before and now the kids are in a new grade. So I can add steps to that by June of 26. However, progress will be reported three times a year.
As reflected in progress report, yeah, something, something so that we have it as a measurable for just the annual. And then my only other question is just trying to imagine, again, when you have to provide, you know, how, how you did this and thinking a lot about how in the workshop and in the MAS C workshop that, that we viewed as part of our work over the summer was making sure that what you have here are things, and I think Matt has actually mentioned this before, too, that are these things that you actually have the power to accomplish? Not that we don't, you don't rely on your team of staff, but I, part of my concern is that the way the actions are stated, it's almost as if you're doing those things. So, you know, you, Danielle and you, Beth, don't provide targeted intervention for at-risk students. So how do you re-frame that goal to be your role in ensuring, and I feel like it will get repeated.
What was that one?
Well, the, the, the action steps for that student learning goal.
So write them in a way that doesn't make it seem like we're the ones doing it.
Right, because we're gonna be.
But we are the ones that are creating the structure for it to happen in the district.
Right. Because we are supposed to be evaluating you on your role in achieving these things. So while these things are certainly things that will be happening and that you are facilitating, I would invite you to state them in a way that shows what your, the actions you will take to ensure that that happens, so that when the evidence comes back, we can see the direct tie there.
We can do that. She's writing, can you see the edits?
Can you, oh, you're already doing it?
Yeah.
And then the district improvement goal, number two, I would, I'm just being dramatic. Instead of determine the cost, I think you guys will develop cost proposals, I hope, right, for us. I know that's what you meant.
Is there thunderstorms? I think it's the cleaning, I think it's the cleaning rolling cart.
Amazing. That's a good sign. And then just that last goal, number 14 is, I think, a restatement of number nine, so you can take one off, you only have 13, lucky number 13, maybe?
Yes. I'm just gonna delete 14. Beth did it.
And I would say, just in general, that feedback I just noted about the first one, if, if you could do that.
We'll go through all of them.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Totally get the intention, I just think it's a good exercise to. Acknowledge that you aren't responsible for doing all, all of these things.
My only feedback, I think this is really good. I, on district improvement goal in general, the action plans, I think VR is realistic, right, and smart? I, I feel like you're taking on a lot. This, like.
I would agree.
Specifically, if you look at four, five and six, develop visuals that assist with communicating budget priorities. Develop budget videos with Dragon TV to create informational soundbites of key budget information. And then the infamous collaborate with school committee budget subcommittee to communicate information and develop timeline strategy. I think that these items are important for, and should be self-evident why they're important, but I almost feel like the school committee could be taking some of that on as an action item. Because if, if I look at your goals holistically, you got, there's a lot here. And I'm just trying to visualize a team or a couple of people like running down to Dragon TV and like storyboarding out visuals and soundbites, just, it just feels like it's a bit too much and I'd hate to, I'd hate to evaluate you at the end of the year and realize you just didn't have time to do it. I mean, you know, it's just.
Matt, what would you think if you did, if, would all of those kind of, like, I would hope that's the purpose of the sub, the budget subcommittee, right? That, that we would collaborate on all of those things? That's our responsibility? So if you wanna throw those into the one.
Yeah, I think, I think.
I think that four and five go into six.
Yeah. I think, because I think collaboration always sounds like a bit of a, sort of like a, it's an, it's, it's, it's way too far, you know, did you collaborate with them?
Yes or no?
Like, what does that mean? Like collaborate? So like, in the spirit of, in the spirit of these action steps, which I think are supposed to be very specific, I would, my concern is that the specificity part is like all on Dr. Klingeman and the collaboration squishy part is like for us.
Right.
So I, I mean, if anyone's gonna, if anyone's gonna put together like soundbites and visuals, I think we should be taking that on. That's just.
Well, that melds with our goal of giving the bite-sized budget presentation.
Yeah.
Information to the public.
Or essentially facilitate.
Yeah.
If I write partner with budget subcommittee to.
To develop.
I wasn't envisioning that all of it would be us at the school and just telling the budget subcommittee, well, we made some videos. I think that, my hope was that everyone would participate and that we want Beth to do I think that, my hope was that everyone would participate and that we want Beth to do a video about the curriculum and that we wanted maybe Katie St. Clair to do a video about facilities needs and to be able to bring the whole group in. And these were, we were thinking that these were going to be two to three-minute quick clips about understanding more about how full day kindergarten impacts the operating budget. But I think certainly to share the wealth with the budget subcommittee because this all falls in your purview of managing and voting on and recommending the budget and so.
Yeah, and maybe you specifically state what you're saying, which is with the appropriate administrative staff, who, I guess, I don't, that's not really accurate if you're going to include facilities director, but somehow incorporate the idea that this is to be done alongside.
And I think when they do their, when they do their goal setting, anyone that has something to do with ours would be able to incorporate that. And I think that what you're seeing is not unusual for educators in that you're trying to capture one aspect of your job that is measurable in a focus area and you're doing a million things in that area. And we all know for us, having such a consolidated budget process in Duxbury in that we have to have everything presented to you in its entirety by November and that the town manager makes a recommendation in December and then we have the March town meeting, everything is crunched. So we do do all of this. Teachers face the same thing. There's a million things they do in their classroom every single day and they have to just pick student learning goal, professional practice goal, and that's not everything that they do, but those are just their documented efforts in those areas. And so we all have these jobs that are giant and you're just trying to pick like, what is the most important things happening this year? And for us, the budget is really important and a lot of that will be at the beginning of the year. Hopefully we do such a good job with the communication materials that that will be what is utilized after we get everything completed in the fall. But all the other things are things that we need to complete and have done by the end of the year. But we'll see where we can just include all of you and your goals to be able to have sections of our, our district goals as well.
And I think to think about how, you know, if it's an action step, then it should ideally, you know, we'll be looking for evidence of that. So if it's squishy and it's hard, maybe it's not quite the right.
Yeah.
How do you define it so that it is something you can present evidence on that can be evaluated?
Anybody else have any feedback on goals?
I like the format. Simple, straightforward.
Seventh time's the charm.
Yeah. We're on like, what, the 50th? We're good. And by next meeting, maybe, we'll be ready to go. It's exciting. Okay, action plans. Yes, I think this has been a bit of a learning curve for everybody on how we, how we do this. And something resonated with me because I was thinking about that the suggestion was that that might be something you do. You know, committee members can participate in a component of the administrative retreat, not that we would be there all day. But given that this is something that we are actioning together and we are to hold the district accountable using this tool, I think it is sort of strange that you guys do all of this and then we look at it and it just, it didn't, I don't think it worked as well as I could have.
I think it would be great to workshop it.
A lesson learned a little bit for our last year of the strategic plan.
And I think when we write the new strategic plan, part of the challenge has been the way it was written in that it wasn't written with KPIs. And I think we will be able to have a format that is better suited for this kind of yearly updates in our next iteration of a strategic plan. So I think we're trying to make it work with the one we currently had and it's, it's kind of clunky. So given that, we've added the KPIs and tried to adjust the action steps and also simplify it.
Yes, I mean, my only, I had shared some feedback because you shared this with me on Friday. I think just generally my challenge is always that the concept of a KPI is that it's a measurable indicator. And I think in an attempt to kind of have a KPI for each strategic initiative, it's almost become like a restatement of the goal. And so I was trying to think about constructive feedback around, a lot of the things that have put, have gone into the evidence of change column are actually indicators, I think. And if there's kind of a way to have those be the indicators of what you're carrying out because they are measurable. Where, and the KPIs that are stated in here, I have a hard time figuring, kind of imagining how you're going to report out to us. Because the idea here is that that's, at the end of the day, at the end of the year, we say, okay, you know, where is the evidence that we've achieved? That, that we have accomplished, not only that we did the things we said we were going to do, but where did we move the needle and how are we going to tell the community about how we did that and how you measure that? And not everything is measurable in a qual, quantitative way, but there are lots of quantitative measures that can illustrate qualitative work. And so I think that's, the, the challenge is figuring out how we're going to do that with, with the actions and the things that you've set out to do. And I don't think, we don't vote on these, do we? I mean, or is it?
I think you would vote on them at the next meeting. In that they're, the districts, it's the strategic plan work that the district is carrying out this year and all of our goals would be aligned to them. So I would want to make sure that you're comfortable with the way they're worded and that. It appears that there would be clear evidence that I could provide to you at the end of the year that would show. I, I think that the evidence of the goals will, of the goals are different than the evidence of the action plans because the action plans, you're going to see that the school improvement plans are hopefully well-aligned to those action plans when you see those come to you. And so I don't actually know, I, I would feel more comfortable if you approved the action plans the way we've developed them for the year so that we can move forward with the school improvement plans.
I just, I had one observation and it was 1.1.
Which I don't have.
On SO, on, yeah. SO1?
SO, yep, 1.1.
Strategic objective.
The KPI or the initiative or the S, the objective?
Yes. Yeah, communication and collaboration. Okay, that's all right, sorry. I wrote notes and now I'm like, what was my thing? So, you know, thank you, last year, at the end of last year, you did a nice detailed review of the K-12 Insights survey, which really I thought provided a lot of good data and I think it was great that it reached out to all the stakeholders in the school system and we are taking actions as a result. For example, the food service presentation that we'll have because that was by far and away, I think, the, the area for, you know, most concern. And then something that perhaps was a bit surprising to, to me individually was the bullying that was brought up as, you know, teachers, I think, in particular felt that, you know, there was a concern with that. And, and what I see is there is now inclusive behavior modeling being implemented across the schools to really encourage a caring environment for the students. So I think actions are being taken and I note that we are going to do the K-12 survey again this year. But I don't know what the timing and the rollout for communication, I didn't see that in here. I could have missed it, but I didn't see that that is in here as like, we are going to roll out the survey and here's how we're going to communicate it. Because I want to make sure you have, I know you did note you have a baseline of participation for last year. But, okay, so what is your goal for participation? Do you have a goal for participation that you want this year? And what did you learn about last year that will help you, similar to the bus plan, right? We ramped up that communication, you saw improvement in participation. So I think you can add something a bit more specific there. And then in your student data presentation, Dr. Klingerman, I didn't see K-12 Insights survey in there, which I think should be added to your slide that you had for that.
For the beginning of the year update, okay.
Yeah, we did have that data for the end of year. So ideally that would be in the June.
Right.
The SY 24, 25, K-12 Insights, we will see at the end of the school year.
And I guess, I guess when you're asking the students all to do this again, I, I don't know what type of feedback they either should be getting or did get, right? Because they're students, but if we're going to require certain age levels to have to complete it again, you know, I think it's important to make sure they feel like this is worth my time. You know, I'm not just doing this because I have to, I'm doing it because it means something, here's what it means. So I don't know how to word it appropriately in here, but I think it should be contemplated as an important piece because it's a lot of effort that you go through to put the survey out and then collect the data. And what are we doing with it? And it costs money too, right, so.
Maybe we can have that as one of our student advisory goals, that the results of the survey. We, we went through the results with our superintendent's advisory with students to look for trends in the data that students reported. But beyond that, maybe we could develop a plan where we could communicate it out with all the students somehow to see where the students' results came through with the food services recommendations and if there was any evidence of bullying or inconsistent disciplinary behaviors or anything like that that came out. So we can talk about that. So students' results, student results will be shared.
In ASP. I'm just kidding.
Plenty of time now.
I think it should be all results because some of the teachers commented on bullying as well.
Right, well, yeah, that was.
We did share out.
With the students?
We didn't share out the teacher and the parent results with the students, but we shared out all of the results with the school staff.
Right.
And then we shared out the overall trends with school committee and to the community that we saw broadly from all groups.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's this question of a data dashboard and what that is, but I, I think at some point we want to figure out how you make that pub, like, our K-12 Insights data and information should be living somewhere on the website for people to access. It does, okay, great.
So on, so on the website, on the main page, I'm sorry to.
Sorry, can I call on?
Yes, it is.
That side of the table is just.
Slackers.
So we created a data and accountability.
I did see that, I didn't realize K-12 was in there.
Yes, and so since our, one of our retreat meetings when we talked about it, we've added in a number of kind of data resources, so the presentation from the K-12 Insight, I believe something around the equity audit and a number of other things that we had from last year.
Okay.
So we'll just, those will live there. And that way there's one central repository for that information. But then we'll continue to add stuff as we're going forward.
Right, and maybe it's as simple, Danielle, as in one of your updates, linking people. I think the problem is stuff is on the website, but nobody knows it's there, right? Or, you know, we don't highlight it, find a way to draw attention. We can help you that too. Yeah, no, absolutely. For sure. Okay, so, so do you, do you want us maybe make those tweaks and then we vote this stuff through next meeting? Is that kind of what we, okay. Okay, great, quick, are we good with that?
Yep.
Budget FY '26, let's go. Good news only.
Budget FY '26, there was a meeting held at the select board, meeting on August 26th, the first day of school for staff, where the Sustainable Budget Task Force made a presentation led by Mary McKinnon, the Town Finance Director, with recommendations to the select board based on the information that had been gathered from the meetings that took place May, June, July, August over the summer. So the request was made, it was a really wonderful presentation. I'll share the slide deck with all of you so that you have it because there were just some really excellent visuals about how decisions that have been made about the town of Duxbury that make it the special place that it is in terms of preserving the rural, not a lot of, there's not a lot of stores, there's not a lot of signs, there's a lot of conservation land. And because of those decisions to keep the town culture the way it's been, we've now reached a crossroads in terms of, in order to do that with the zoning regulations that we have and all those other decisions that have been made in the past, that we've reached the point where our 97% real estate tax supporting the entire budget of the town is just not sustainable. And so with that, the recommendation for the task force was that all town departments would be asked to create a level-funded budget plus 2.5% as well as a conservative department recommended budget with, that would be more of actual needs, not any kind of extra. They were not tasking everyone with, create a what would you like to have kind of budget, but just a budget that would be appropriate without significant cuts that would have a detrimental impact to your department. The select board, after a lot of conversation, did vote to approve that. And so right now we're in this space where the town departments are developing their budgets with those two scenarios, which then, when we have that information to present to the finance committee and the select board, additional recommendations will be made about what steps we would take at that point. So right now, we are working on looking at what our, if we're looking at level-funded, again, that means taking last year's total bud, operating budget and adding 2.5%, which we all know, we typically, when we do rollover for level services, which would mean sustaining what we have this year into next year's budget, that usually represents between 3% to 5% increase in rollover. And so we would be looking at potential cuts. With that, we will be looking at cuts across the board in terms of expenditures, looking at all of the budget lines that we had last year to see if there's any places we could trim as we develop the budget so that we're not just creating a level-funded budget plus 2.5% and relying only on personnel cuts. And so that's the work of the budget subcommittee and that Lisa's been working on and we're ready to roll with that. So more information to come. And as we go through the next several school committee meetings, we will be prepared to provide different bite-sized budget updates to you so that that November 7th presentation is an all-encompassing and the first time you're hearing all of the information. So hopefully that meeting will just be a culmination of all of the meetings we have up until then. We're also starting the capital project of looking at what the capital needs are and gathering that information in terms of technology and what other infrastructure needs that we may have across the district. So that's the budget update at a glance.
Yeah, so exciting and positive, okay. Public comment? Change those things. I have a quick question, do you, do you guys have a policy subcommittee meeting on the books? So we can, just because there's a couple of those changes that I feel like we need to get done, so I can.
Do you know, do the agenda?
We don't yet. Do you know what policy the public comment is in, off the top of your head or not? We'll find it. It's B E D.
B E H?
B E D H, something like that. Thank you.
We can, if, I can talk to you offline, we, I think the next one we were going to do is first Monday in October, but we could do one, if you have time, we could do one next week.
Sure. Could just tweak those two that impact our ability to change the agenda, if that's even relevant. I guess that's, public comment is the only thing that's in a policy. The consideration for future just came off, not that we do.
Yep.
Okay, all right, great. Fantastic. Can I have a motion adjourned?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
All right, great.